We now have a quorum. And yes, we still have a quorum. So at this point, it is what's six oh two. Hereby call this meeting of the King George County Planning Commission, twenty nine March, twenty twenty two. Planning, what are we calling this meeting? Work session, yes, work session meeting. Call this meeting to order for the record, we do have a quorum. And for anybody who can, we'll ask at this point if you could stay in and recite pledge allegiance with us.
Want to lead us to the flag?
The United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Williams, would you lead us in invocation?
By our heads. Father, once again, we thank you for allowing us to gather under this room, dear Lord, to do the work of the county, dear Lord. We ask that you give our, give us prayer hearts and minds as we make decisions and, and discuss things that concern our citizens, dear Lord. These and other blessings we pray, amen.
Amen. Alrighty. At this point of the evening, we will open up our public comment period. If there's any members of the public that would like to speak, please announce that now. State your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. See that there's no one here in the audience. Mr. Dines, do we have anyone online that would like to speak? Alright, thank you, we'll move on from that. Number four on our agenda is the approval of minutes, of which we have none for this particular meeting, so we're gonna move on from that. Next on the agenda is the community planning liaison officer naval support facility, South Potomac Dalrymple. Welcome, sir, the floor is yours.
Update this week, thank you.
Alright, well, thank you for being with us. Alright, next item on the agenda is plan review, which we do not have one. There are no public hearings on the agenda for this evening, and that brings us to the old business, which is the zoning and subdivision ordinance update from the Berkeley Group. So we, and welcome, thank you for coming back. And I will, at this point, turn it over to you.
Thank you. This good? Sound good to everyone in the room? Okay. Alright, thank you for having us back, it's good to be here, I feel like we're well on our way, so. Tonight, we're gonna do Articles. Four and five. The presentation will work. At some point, is it on? I was born in the new age. No, thank you, okay. Alright, so we're gonna do Articles four and five tonight, and then a little bit of additional stuff that pertains to it. Chesbys research and some cluster development. And just like last time, we're gonna go through the major highlights, things to really call out to you all, but. As before, the footnotes in your drafts will give you a full, the full lowdown of all the changes that we've made. So if there is something that we get to in the presentation, and we get to the end, and there's something that you saw in the footnotes that we didn't touch on, and you'd like to be sure to bring that up. So we, according to this little schedule graphic, we are still right here in the middle of the project. We're almost halfway through the Articles, and then we will be towards the last of the work sessions. So this is work session three of eight, as a reminder. So if you look up here on the screen, again, we've made it through all of the investigation and the public engagement. We've made it through several Articles, we've gone through the general administration permits and applications and the non-conformities. Tonight, we'll be doing four and five, which are districts, primary districts and overlays. And then what that will leave out are the uses, use matrix, use standards, subdivision, and then community design standards, which. Again, that's your lighting, fencing, landscaping, et cetera. Okay, Article four, we'll just go ahead and get right in, so this is your primary zoning districts. This will talk about the intent of the districts, the purpose of separating things out into districts, and then it really just goes right into the district standards themselves. And before that, there is a little bit of information that pertains in general. This is your lot measurement, setback measurement, not setback amounts specifically, but just how to determine those. And height as well, and some exemptions to those sorts of things. And then also here, we have plan development districts, which would be your resort community and your mixed use, and then cluster provisions. So when we were drafting this, the, the idea for this and to reorganize it is just based on public engagement, what we heard from the public, and as well as staff direction. Things that are needed, things that don't have a lot of clarity, things that have not worked in the past. So that has been what drove some of the changes. And then beyond that is just some reorganization of the material, making it a little more user-friendly, easier to find, less repetitive, that sort of thing. Okay. Again, just a reminder, if there's something that we don't get to that you saw in the footnotes, please feel free to call it out. So these will just be the big highlights that we really wanna draw your attention to and, and have an open discussion about. So the first one here is going to be section four, two, three. And this is one of those sections that I just mentioned, this will apply to all the primary districts. So if you navigate to that, in the existing ordinance, there is a little bit of text that says how height is measured, and there's a graphic. And there's also a little list that says what's exempt. So we took that information, kept the same sort of idea, we've provided how height is measured in a general sense, kept what's exempt. But we've also added a few new things to help King George citizens, especially with the unique topography that's here. How you're gonna determine your average grade and what height actually means. So that's really what four, two, three is doing here. And then if you, if you're looking at your sheets, we also have some new text in here that draws attention to the floodplain management overlay in Article five. And this is just saying that raised buildings will essentially be taken care of through the floodplain management overlay, because that's where a raised structure would be. And the way we have it now, correct me if I'm wrong, Rebecca, the raised structures, the height will be measured from the, from the raise. It won't be from the ground and all the way up, so you could still have a two-story building from the point of the, the, the base floor, I guess is what you would call it. Have that right? Okay. And then, so for this one, something that staff brought up when we did this the first time is. To add an exception to these height measurements, particularly for those unique structures in the floodplain management overlay and that sort of thing. So we've also added here an item B of this section, just that you can have a special exception permit to, to veer from these height measurement standards. And then, as we, to just keep in mind, this small conversation that we've just had, as we get to each of the district charts that will give each of the standard. We have also introduced maximum height limits, which was not something that is in the existing ordinance, which is the biggest change here. It's not so much this stuff that's in general, it's really the, the introduction of a maximum height. So what we've done is essentially done thirty-five feet for most structures. In a couple of the districts, we do have forty-five feet for multifamily, just assuming that you have a three-story apartment building. And then we have allowed an exception up to sixty feet for non-residential buildings. In King George County, that would most likely be barns, silos, churches, steeples, that sort of thing. It's not necessarily just about a commercial building, we tried to keep in mind those other unique structures that would be much taller. However, Heather was so kind to reach out to the King George Fire Chief, and he has given us some valuable information. And in short, his recommendation based on capacity for the fire department with no help, and correct me if I get any of this wrong. He suggests to do a two-story for residential, three-story for commercial, never to exceed fifty feet. The only thing that Berkeley Group would say to counter that is to not just say commercial, but turn that into non-residential. It wouldn't just be, again, commercial, you would have barns, silos, your churches, towers, those sorts of things. So we can talk more on height as we get to each district, but I just wanted to call that up. It's one of the biggest changes here in the height, is that we've introduced height maximums. And we can certainly go with what the fire marshal suggests, we can play with the numbers a little bit and find something in the middle. But we can get to that during each district. Any questions so far?
We have, uh, do we have definitions for residential and non-residential?
I wanna say we do, but if we don't, we will have them by the end.
Okay.
Rebecca's checking now.
The reason I'm asking is because in A one or A two, say we have a cluster subdivision, is that residentially zoned, or is it agriculturally zoned, or, or non-residentially zoned?
That would be residentially zoned.
A one or A two?
If it, well, it would just be on the structure itself, so the, even if it's in an, in an A one district, the structure itself, so the silo, let's just take a silo. Even though it's in an ag district, it would still be a structure in, in the residential, if it's, let me say this backwards. If it's, um, let's take a church, that's a more easy example, whether it's a residential district or an ag. If the height limit is forty-five feet, but those non-residential buildings can go up to sixty, it's not really dependent on the district itself. It will be, but they're all the same right now. But it, it doesn't matter the structure itself, what it is, it's just that it's non-residential period. Does that make sense, or did I just muddy it more? We can treat them differently, if that's something that you feel is more important that, you know. That's, so that's what it'll be, it's just to give a little bit more wiggle room to those, again, structures that are. Right, so, so residential uses and then non-residential, but non-residential can be a handful of things, whereas residential is solely dwellings.
To go back a little bit, I noticed also that we did a little bit of nomenclature changing up there, but specifically the agriculture preservation, A one district was sort of a name change. Is that, is that a common, um, is that vernacular that's being adopted in other?
So the reason that, that we suggested some changes here is based on the district standards, so the lot size, uses, those sorts of things, and the existing intent statement. There's not really a lot of difference between them.
Yeah.
So we were trying to, to just differentiate them more, especially with so few of it being A one. I feel like, again, if anything's not exactly right, or you, you think it would be.
No, I like.
Better, different, but that's mostly the, the, the reason is to just give them a little bit more separation from themselves. Same with residential, R one and R two are pretty similar, so.
No, I think it is good, because there's, I think there's often a lot of confusion about A one and A two, and you're like, well, it's lot size, you know.
We saw that ourselves, and we heard that in public engagement, not too much, but it, it definitely was brought up a little bit. So we tried to find some, some minor ways to set them apart from each other.
No, and I'm sorry for the sidebar, I just thought.
Oh, no, that's okay. Anybody else on these two things right here? Alright, four, two, four, this is similar to height, this is in general, this isn't to any one specific district. This is to all of the base districts, so all residential, commercial, industrial. So this is basically just replacing what exists now, which I don't have it up in front of me, do you know what section it used to be? So we have given this section a bit of an overhaul, we have certainly simplified it a lot. One stark example is that in the existing ordinance, corner lots used to have two front setbacks, or do now, I should say. One full depth and one half depth, which can be a little confusing and a little bit cumbersome for both staff to, to regulate and chase after, and for the reader. So what we did is we've just scaled this section back a lot, we've taken out the measurement of irregular lots, and simply just gone forward with regular lots, as most are. And so this section, again, it will just tell you what setbacks you have. So for a typical through lot, you're going to have one front setback, two side setbacks, and a rear setback. And then you'll see here, under item A, corner lots and through corner lots have two fronts, one side, and a rear. Again, this was just to simplify things, make it a little easier to understand, without needing staff's help. The other thing that changed here, which I probably should have started with, is the existing ordinance can be a little confusing by using yard in lieu of setback. Which is just a best practice and, and more common to use the term setback, so you don't confuse it with someone's actual yard as a form of measurement. So we've replaced all yard business with simply just using setback. Again, it's a best practice, it's something you see more often than not. A little bit less confusing. I think we've touched the high points here. Anybody have any questions?
Can I go back?
Of course.
Four, two, three? Again?
For height?
The exceptions? To the height limitations. I see flagpoles, and I see parapet walls. Flagpoles, so, some other jurisdictions have gotten into issues on that in the last couple of years. Are, are we gonna talk about specific? I'm reading this to say that. The limitations don't apply to them. Is it somehow gonna be wrapped up in an exception later, or is it just really?
This would just be saying that any flagpole wouldn't fall under the parameters of the, the height limits that we have set.
Okay. I just, you know, there've been a couple of things in the news the last year or so about private owners putting up flagpoles, and then what they choose to fly from, and being objectionable to some folks. The other one is the parapet walls in figuring the total height.
I'm gonna say, do we still have?
What are you measuring to, if you're not measuring to the parapet wall?
So for the parapet walls, it would be from the base of the parapet itself, on the top of the, the wall, up. The, the whole parapet itself, from the, so this is the, this is the building, and you have the parapet here, it would be from this point. So if that's a.
There are, parapet walls are used on flat roofs.
That's, right, right, so from the.
There is no such thing as a flat roof, because all of them have some taper, so are you measuring to where the top of the taper is?
Yes. And if we need to put some more control on that, we can put a limit to it. If you look at. If you scroll, if you go on your draft to the little figure for height measurement, it would sort of be under the same context. So average grade there, pretend that that's the top of the, the building, whether it's a, you know, a raised roof or not, and then straight up. Does that make sense?
No, I. I just wanted an explanation on the way you guys were thinking about it. You know, on a commercial building, it's often you put rooftop equipment up there. You raise the parapet wall to hide the rooftop equipment, so you could get pretty tall building. So if we're limiting commercial or industrial buildings to, what did you say, fifty feet? It really could be much higher than that, if they choose to raise the parapet wall just to hide rooftop equipment.
Would you like to add a limit to the parapet walls?
I'm just throwing it out as.
No, it's a good, it's a good point.
And the whole point of the parapet is to hide that mechanical equipment, so it appears that that's the top of the building.
Yeah, so.
And so that's.
I mean, in your figure four, one, you're, you're showing two things, you're showing the average grade up to the eve as one height measurement, and then up to the ridge of the roof as a second height. To me, that's sort of the equivalent of a parapet wall.
Okay, so would, would it, would we feel more comfortable if we put a?
I guess I would just like to see it left out of the exception.
Okay.
So that we can deal with it.
On a case-by-case?
Basis, same thing as the flagpoles.
Okay.
I would like to see that not just completely an open exception.
Yeah, I, actually, I think that's a, probably a, a really good point you made, Mr. Kendrick, because there have been a number of those issues that have come into the news lately, and if we can have a chance to address it now, we might wanna just go ahead and do so. What, what would, what would the, what would the commission think about putting a limitation on that? I mean, we don't have any huge thoroughfares, exception being three and three oh one, but, you know, the ones that we've seen in the news are ones that are flying over ninety-five or something like that, but. We have an opportunity now, we probably don't wanna miss it, if we can write anything in.
I just wanted to note for the commission that currently we do not have a permit regulation for a flagpole.
Oh, really?
So that is an unpermitted, it is not regulated by the zoning ordinance, or I believe the building code, and while the building code is not my main forte, but we do not currently issue permits for flagpoles, just for reference.
If you did that, if you did that, though, that would make it okay to sixty foot, over sixty foot, it's an exception, right? Sixty foot was your measurement for maximum height?
As I read this, it's an exception to the height restriction.
Right, but if you take it out of the exception and make a sixty-foot height maximum.
Correct, because it would be, it would be a non-residential, or yes, structure.
Or would we have to note it on, this includes flagpoles, on the?
You would have to write an ordinance that addresses the flagpoles if you don't put it in the exemption. And then you would have to create a permit process or a review process for that flagpole. Unless you state flagpoles under this height do not require a permit, or something of that nature. But as of right now, today, I do not issue permits for a flagpole.
I think we should look at putting something in, I mean, six, sixty foot, and if it's over, if it's somewhere that warrants it, then that's great, if it's not, then.
Okay.
To me, just.
Group thoughts?
Yeah, I just. Yeah, take it out and, of the exemptions, and then we'll figure out where to add it.
Yeah. Let's, let's do that for now, we'll, we'll make a placeholder for it.
Is everyone feeling the same way about parapet walls, or mostly just concerned for flagpoles?
I understand the parapet wall, uh, element, I think that's a good, I understand where you're going from on that one. But I don't think that would be as passionately charged as potentially somebody flying them.
Right.
I would agree with that, I, it's just that I've seen buildings where they put up the parapet wall, and in the wall, they put these huge vents so that the air can still get to the equipment. It's. It, it looks weird, but if it's going into a truly commercial or industrial kind of an application, maybe it's not a big deal, so. I can live with that one either way, I just wanted to bring it up.
Okay.
Go ahead and say it.
Alright, we good on this one?
So what's the final, I just wanna make sure, what's the final direction for the parapet walls? I think we're clear to remove flagpoles from the exemptions. Are we leaving parapet walls in for now?
As an exception?
Yes.
I would like for them to ask for an exception to put up an unusually tall parapet wall. But. I'm not trying to make this more complicated either, I'm just, we tend to get caught because things are not in our ordinances, not.
Yeah, right, they're not, exactly, not clearly spelled out. Yeah, if there's an opportunity that we can erase any ambiguity in there, and I'll leave it to you two gentlemen, because y'all seem to know a little bit more about that. What do you think?
I, I'm, I'm stating that I think it should be measured to the top of the parapet.
Okay.
I like that.
Okay, Rebecca, got it?
If you're there, I mean, in normal, I don't know, I guess in commercial, twenty-foot floors, sixty foot's a long way, one through four, is there any reason? Is this standard language pretty much in surrounding counties, or?
Yeah.
It is, okay.
Are you talking about spires, belfries, cupolas, monuments? You're only gonna have those on certain kind of buildings, so you're already sort of expecting that, so it doesn't bother me there. But flagpoles are something that an individual can just stick up by itself, and then, I'm just thinking, commercial buildings. You know, not that they're gonna use that extra height to put floor space in, but it just becomes a much bigger structure.
Yeah, okay.
What about, uh, number fourteen? So number twelve says parapet walls, and which you stated to remove, but number fourteen says rooftop mechanical equipment screened by parapet walls. So if we remove parapet walls, would number fourteen then be contradictory of what you're asking for? Or we could add a, a maximum height of a parapet wall, so that you're not having an extreme parapet wall. But I, I would assume that the commission would want mechanical equipment to be screened by a parapet wall of some sort for commercial building.
Yeah, this is where I was concerned, it would get a little too complicated, but, I mean, you know, if you've got. Flat roof building, so-called flat roof building, and you've got a parapet wall of a couple of feet, just as the edge of it. Your equipment tends to be located not at the very edge, so your sightline from the ground, you don't see it too much, but.
So for reference, we're reviewing our, our courthouse, and that does have rooftop mechanical as well as parapet walls. So I would be concerned with writing an ordinance that would make our own courthouse non-conforming.
I, I'm not worried where they like me about my comment. The point is, yeah, I mean, it would just create an exception, but they'd have to run through an exception.
They'd have to come to us.
But is there, is there someplace in between where, you know, an extreme parapet wall, a special exception process might be warranted, but a typical size, whatever that may be, parapet wall, is, is there somewhere?
So we, we've talked about getting in these, um. Server farms, I'm not sure what the right phrase for them is.
Data center?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you're talking about an enormous amount of cooling that might be going on, so you could have a pretty big unit up there, and they could push up the parapet wall to cover it. But if you're just talking about a normal building. I don't know. Maybe, maybe I'm going over the deep end here, but.
I mean, that could cover a mixed-use building too, pardon, could be a mixed-use building too. That would have a parapet wall, there are a lot of buildings that might have that.
So if the issue is, you know, creating a parapet wall that's extremely large, maybe the, the exemption here is. For parapet walls that are no taller than three feet, or, you know, I, I don't know what the standard is for, to hide regular equipment.
So on the courthouse, are they talking about the parapet wall, the whole perimeter of the building, or just around equipment?
The entire perimeter, I believe the, um, reference to missing teeth was used during that, uh, review panel, that they didn't want a portion of a wall, or, you know. A portion of the wall missing, that it wouldn't, they like that uniform, pretty look to that courthouse.
I mean, they would, you could still cover it through an exception process, right? I mean.
But is the exception.
Depending on where it's located, and the sightlines around it, and.
Do you know what the building height is that you're talking about?
Not offhand, but I could certainly get it for you.
I mean, is it, how many stories is that building?
It is a two-story building, and it is prestigious. It's very prestigious looking.
So on a, on a two-story building, you're not gonna get more than sixty feet out there?
No, I don't think so. Ten feet per floor.
It's two-story with a walkout basement in the back, where they have the sally port for the inmates to come in the back way. The front has the big pillars and the cupola and the whole nine.
So my, my, I guess, sort of what eats at me a little bit, if you, if you've got a building and we're trying to limit height to fifty feet. And it's a flat roof building, and they go up near the fifty feet with three floors, which is. I mean.
I will just say this one thing, it, it may not be super helpful, but as far as the fire marshal's concerns are about going up to fifty feet. That's more or less about getting to bodies that would be up there, not so much unmanned, empty space. I know that's not just what we're talking about, but if you did ha, if you left it the way it was. And, and were worried about it getting to fifty feet, it's probably unlikely, but it, let's just say it did. The fire marshal is more concerned about people being in those upper areas, not so much just it being that tall, for the sake of being that tall. Again, that may have muddied it for you, but. Areas, not so much just it being that tall for the sake of being that tall, again, that may have m- muddied it for you, but.
Sixty feet, you call the definition to the top of the, of the wall for feet.
Cuz, and my concern is that the builders are gonna say, well, I don't need a parapet wall. And I'm just gonna slap that mechanical equipment up there and, and for everybody to see, and is that the look that King George County wants?
Good point.
I know Rebecca brought this up, but is there interest in adding a number to this exemption? Even if four feet isn't the perfect answer, what if we said parapet walls up to six feet and then, which is, I think rather tall, I'm not a. I'm definitely not a construction expert, but.
Talking about going to fifty. Are talking about when you get to the commercial buildings. What would the courthouse be considered?
Commercial building.
You're gonna be. What's that height gonna be, probably fifty feet?
So we have, I think we have it all set at thirty-five right now, but it could go up to. We have, what we have drafted in front of you is sixty feet, fire marshal is suggesting fifty.
Fifty feet plus. An exception for anything over fifty feet. That worked?
I'd be a few of parapet walls of under six feet.
Yeah.
Six feet should hide whatever you're gonna hide. Cuz they're gonna set it back from the edge of the building.
Right.
So it's not gonna be right on the edge.
I will say, I don't have zoning ordinances memorized, that is for sure, but four feet's a common number. And if that's too low, six feet might be a happy medium. To start, we can certainly take a look at other places and see what folks are doing, but. Four, I know I've seen, I've seen a lot.
I, I don't wanna be over to be a crack, I mean, you're really trying to limit the number of habitable floors in a building. Rather than the rooftops, so I. I just didn't wanna see anybody getting carried away.
That's true, yeah, right.
Six feet or.
Okay.
Seemed like I'm like the odd guy out here worried about something that maybe it's not worth being worried about, so I mean.
Well, we might.
Want to leave parapet walls in as an exception, I, I could live with that too, but the flagpoles is really the one that was bothering me the most.
So I think we can more easily address parapet walls than flagpoles, right? This whole, because we don't have, we don't have anything, I mean, we. Even if we write in something now for flagpoles, we don't have anything on the back end that would, that would govern it from a standpoint of oversight or monitoring, correct? Since they're not regulated at all now.
You would have to have some sort of application process and review process. Um, and also to note, even if you created a permit process, you cannot limit someone's freedom of speech of what they wish to fly on that flagpole. So if that is your concern, I'm not sure that that is something that we can control. I'm no attorney, but.
Yeah, no matter how high it is.
High.
The content of it.
Suggesting that, it's, I don't wanna see a hundred-foot flagpole, period, no matter what they're flying, really, but. I, I had this image of, there's a car dealership up in, in Waldorf. That's flying a really, it's a really tall and it's got the huge American flag. I don't have any objections to flying the American flag, no matter what size it is, but. It, you know. It's just huge, and is that really what we want down the side of three oh one in the future? Um, I don't, I don't know. I would like to take flagpoles off the exemption list so that we can address it somehow. And it's got nothing to do with freedom of the speech, it's just it overpowers.
I, I just wanna make sure that we're also mindful of residential homes, you know, not, a lot of service members choose to put. A flagpole in their front yard. And I don't, I don't necessarily want to create a permit process for someone like that. If that seems fair, of course, I'm not a decision maker, you are.
Under fifty, sixty feet, I don't.
Over under.
Right, I think the thing would be if like go over sixty feet or fifty feet or whatever.
Right.
Yeah, I mean. I should've thought this one through more, uh. I'm fine with leaving parapet walls in and just dealing with it, it's not gonna be a huge issue, I don't think. But the flagpoles, I would like to see them at least have to apply for an exemption over some height and, and you can pick. Forty-five, fifty, sixty feet, whatever you want, I, I agree, lots of people have flags in their, I mean, we have a lot of retired. You know, military living in the area, and I know they frequently like to do it, a lot of other folks do as well, so I'm, I'm not trying to, you know. Put an issue on that, I just didn't want the thing along I ninety-five to be replicated out here on three oh one in the near, near future, so.
So if we just, if we're sticking with the fifty-foot limit, then if we added, and by we, I mean these fine ladies over here, added. And a section ordinance that says any flagpole over fifty foot will require a special exception permit, is that what you're looking for?
Got it.
Like.
Alright, good?
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, are we ready to leave this behind for now?
Please.
Okay. Alright, so next up, we are jumping straight to the district standards themselves. So just an overall change here from the existing ordinance, the existing ordinance, for all intents and purposes. Was mostly, is, is mostly, I keep talking about it in the past tense, is mostly text. We have broken the district standards out into charts, it's just easier to read, you can take it in little bit, bits, bite-sized pieces. Um, and you have some uniformity to them, so if you are in an ag district, but you also own a business in commercial. The layout is the same, so you know what to expect, um, from staff standpoint, as well as if you are just a citizen. Um, so for the agricultural districts specifically, a big change that we did here is in the existing ordinance. The district standards provide what is typically considered a use standard. Um, for setting lot sizes for the keeping of animals and horses. That will be in the use standards, which is Article seven, so what we've done here is taken this out, so if you're looking at your drafts in front of you. And you see at the very top where it says minimum lot area, we have condensed this down to just say, generally speaking, an A-one. Minimum lot size of ten acres, I don't have the existing up in front of me, but. In the existing, it says that if you have um horses in a subdivision, it's. Two acres plus X, Y, and Z for each additional horse, that content again is being moved to Article seven, cuz it's more or less a use. And this is just talking about your district itself, does that make sense? That is the big change here, I don't think that we made any other changes here, again, just to bring up height. Um, we did, we did add the maximum height here, so again, like I mentioned a few minutes ago. Throughout most of the ordinance, we're proposing thirty-five feet, um, which is two stories essentially, which that's also something we can consider. If, not just for ag, this is in general, if we're not comfortable with just talking about feet, we can say thirty-five feet or two stories. It goes both ways, localities, there isn't just one set way that they choose to do it. Feet is certainly more common, um, but it's something to throw out there, if anyone's curious about that or interested. Um, we can do it both ways, but back to the specifics, so we're proposing that principal structures. Would be thirty-five feet, um, accessory structures cannot be taller than the principal. And then again, for ag districts specifically, you would jump back to that exemption list, so barns, farm buildings would not be included in these numbers. Any questions here?
Um, I did note that there's, I believe, a typo would be right-ofways of more than fifty feet. I believe that should be thirty-five feet across. Instead of forty-five feet, forty-five feet is if you don't have fifty-foot of right-ofway.
Okay. Will you make a note about Rebecca?
Right-ofway's over fifty feet, you said thirty-five all the way across?
Yep.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay, if there's anything, we can jump back to it. Alright, so next up, we're just gonna scroll through each chart and talk about them, so it's just gonna be the next couple of pages in your draft. So next up, we have section four or five one, which is the single-family residential district regulations. A note here for the residential, we did break this out into two charts, because our three multi-family is so different. From R one and R two, again, we, we were really honing in on just simplifying everything and making it foolproof, hopefully. So this will just be R one and R two. The big changes here that we have made. Um, is the introduction essentially of two measurements for front setback. So what we've done is in all of the districts, this will be for residential, commercial, and industrial. We have mimicked the current system that's used in the ag dis- agricultural districts. And so we have a setback for right-ofways less than fifty feet in width, and then a setback determination for right-ofways fifty feet or more. Um, and this is mostly to address that lot lines here in King George County, some seem to be in different areas than others. Um, and then this will just give a system so that. Almost everyone is accounted for, any questions, do we wanna dive into this? And then, so in addition to that, what we've also done, instead of just making a second option, those figures have been, we have introduced new figures.
So are the setbacks, the front setbacks, aren't they backwards?
Meaning that the.
Right-ofways fifty feet or more in width has a bigger setback than a less than fifty foot?
Yeah, I think they're slot, they should be.
They're backwards, right? Cuz a less than fifty foot, you have a bigger setback, so that if they have to widen the road, then all those.
Still conform.
Are still conform.
So, so there's two thoughts and we can go with either way that you wanna do it. So one is, is the way that you stated that, yeah, we may look to the future that this road's gonna be widened, and so we're gonna go ahead and make them sit back further. The other thought is, maybe this is already a wide road that has lots of travel and probably higher speeds. And so you want them to sit back further for that reason, to be kind of away from the, the traffic and that sort of thing. So. So some localities, instead of doing like this right-of-way width thing, they do. If you're on a primary road versus a secondary road, and so they actually have greater setbacks from the primary road. Cuz it's already got heavy traffic, higher speeds, and they're thinking the secondary roads are more likely to. To stay the secondary road and be quieter.
Yes, I.
Just for reference, if V-Dot is going to adopt your road, it needs to be fifty feet.
Pardon?
If V-Dot is going to adopt your road, it has to be fifty feet, for reference.
I, I live on a, I live on a prescriptive right-of-way, so basically I have no right-of-way. My property line is the middle of the pavement. Now, it's a thirty-foot prescriptive right, right-of-way, so technically my buffer is fifteen feet from that center of that pavement. So my setback. My setback will be twenty-five feet, if V-Dot comes and takes twenty-five someday. Then my setback is, I lose ten feet. It could be ten feet to glove.
Be safer for the future, right? Or you can just make them all thirty, I think if you flip them, I would be, makes more sense to me if left, I don't know.
Does everyone agree with that? I mean, we're, we're fine to, to do that however you want.
This is your ordinance.
Oh, is it current?
Wanna say, yeah, residential doesn't currently differentiate for your right-of-way as agricultural does. Um, residential has a standard setback.
It is.
Thirty feet is the current requirement.
I would say most um are, most R one, R two, and R three are gonna be on private or public roads. As it, as it stands now, cuz they prob- likely would have had to have been rezoned and to go through that, they're usually bigger.
With fifty-foot rights of way.
Yep.
Make it thirty across the board and flip them. And you think it's thirty now? I don't see reducing it for a smaller road.
Um, also keep in mind that there are exemptions to the setback for porches, things of that nature, so you. Are chiseling away at that, that setback standard as well.
Let's get rid of the size of the road for thirty-five.
There's also an option to keep it the way it was and not differentiate if that's working. Where we've updated the text back in four to four, I think. Um, about how you're determining your setback, we've made it clear now that it's deter- it's from the edge of the right-of-way, regardless of the size. So with that clarification, maybe it's enough to leave the standards themselves the way that they are. That's also an option, you don't, we don't have to change it if, if what you have is working.
Did you come up with this because of a public comment, or is this?
This was more or less in response to the variation in, in lots and some of it being in the center of the right-of-way and some of it being on the edge. This again was just to account for the variation in that and to ensure that everyone was setback enough. But again, if it's with the clarification that we've now added, that it's to be measured from the edge of the right-of-way, again, regardless of the size. There's already some uniformity going to come forth from this without this introduction.
Where is my right-of-way on a prescriptive right-of-way?
Rebecca?
So your, um, we would.
It says, measures from the edge of the right-of-way?
So, so your prescriptive easement would be, I guess you could say the outer edge or the inner edge next to you would be.
Thirty foot, then it's fifteen feet is.
Would be where you would measure from, so if you've got thirty feet, then where that thirty feet ends next to you, then that's where you would measure from.
And just to tie back to this idea, if you wanna flip back in your, in your drafts to four to four. And it's going to be B, measurement methods, item two, front setback. We've added in the text that says, depth of the front setback shall be measured from the edge of the right-of-way. Inward towards the lot until the distance required in the standards is met. Our right-of-ways include primary roads, secondary roads, and private easements. So that again is just a clarification that's not in the existing ordinance, so again, maybe we don't need to have a separate.
I don't think we do. Sorry, Rob, I'm, I just said I don't think we do need a separate.
Does it ever present an issue now?
Not in the residential district, no, it's usually the agricultural districts that are on prescriptive easements and things of that nature. And, and like Louis mentioned, most of our residential zones are already on state-maintained roads and have that fifty-foot easement.
So with that being said, I mean, to me, that sounds like we could do away with the, the two distinctions for the fifty feet. And just say thirty feet.
I think thirty would be good.
Is that okay with everyone?
I think thirty would, I mean, well, I mean, what is, I think thirty would be a little more. Palatable for folks who may be on that, like with the scenario you have, Rob, I mean.
Yeah, I wouldn't want anybody getting closer to the road than that.
Okay, easy enough.
Cuz it's gonna be twenty if they do dedicate.
And now this brought up another question. It's deeper, so four, four point three on your measurement of setbacks. On a concave lot. You're, you're doing this for all districts?
Yes.
So in an A-one district, you might have a concave lot that's a half a mile.
Yes, I guess, I suppose.
Yeah, so that guy can't put a quarter of a mile down the road, can't put a house. In, in other words, when you get that scope, that scope depends on how big the lot is, right?
This is in the existing, does this come up now? Has this been?
From time to time, not.
I think it would be more an exception and not necessarily the rule.
It's also something that we look at when we do subdivisions, you know, you're not creating irregular lot. You know, that would put you in a position where majority of your property would be ate up by a setback. So new, new lots, that is something that we consider during the review process. But not to say that there isn't some oddball shaped lot out there that this might. Present a problem for them, but that's also where the variance process comes into play.
Well, I, I just wanna understand why this has drawn tangent to begin with, why isn't it parallel like everything else is parallel?
So this, this is something that's an existing method, if it's not working or, or we totally dislike it, we can change this. This is the one portion of this section that's been carried over, it was so specific, we've kept it, this is currently a King George. Practice in the, in the ordinance, I don't know if it's happening, but.
So we can stomp it out.
How do other localities do it?
Similarly, similarly, we can work into it if you, no, no.
I think the point of it is to have a, just a standard straight setback. As opposed to if I have a road that curves a lot on that half-mile-long frontage, then my front setback would be all. I don't know, wavy and that could be more difficult to establish or determine. So that's my understanding of why they would do something like this, just to make it a little more standard for those sort of lots.
Yeah, but to Mr. Meyer's point, that could be, that could be a horrible impact if you have a half-mile frontage.
I mean, if you take the field next to La Grange and. You're gonna cut out twenty-five percent of the land because of your setback, because the thing's. Quarter-mile long, I don't know how long it is.
And maybe that's something for our county, since we do have a lot of big lots, that that's something we may be interested in changing.
La Grange, wouldn't La Grange be a corner lot and not?
The, that, that field, I think it was. Is that where they're looking at the solar? Next door to it, but your setback would be if you were building a house, you have a farm. The other one would be maybe like Grantswood where there's a big curve on six oh seven and it follows the curve. It just seems odd that it's a straight line, but maybe we're not really watching that, that close now.
I, I haven't, I feel that that. Property line is a little straighter than you may think. And just remembering those applications, I don't remember a crazy setback line.
And also just to, oh, sorry, to Heather's point. And you all would know better, because I certainly don't live here. If, if it's few and far between, something, you know, if somebody had a half a mile setback, that would just be a variance process. Which of course isn't quick and it isn't easy, but at some point, you can't address every possible, you try to find the, you know.
So, so when you build.
Most robust answer, go ahead.
Pardon me, when you build a road and you do the right-of-way along the road, it's. You know, as you lay out a road, you lay out the arcs of the roads, any of the curves. Why wouldn't we on a con cave lot just. Do a setback that's parallel to whatever that right-of-way is? I heard the comment about creating sort of a straight line, but if, if we got away from that and just said. It's thirty more feet from the edge of the right-of-way that's laid out, then.
It's funny, it's if it goes the other way, we're making a curved line, if it goes this way, we're making a straight line.
Yeah, I'd rather do a curved line that's parallel to the curved line of the.
And it's not just the principal structure that's impacted, it could be an accessory structure that would be impacted by the setback.
So it sounds like everyone seems to be on the same, most everyone that I've heard from. Seem to be on the same page, just to make that, follow the line and we're, we can do that.
Parallel, yeah, parallel setback, right?
I want them to have a bunch of wavy houses all over.
Where did we leave off?
R three is next.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else on R one and R two standards before we got back to?
Yeah, I'm sorry. In the top of that chart, why are we using the term community water and sewer, what?
So again, this is a King George thing, Heather might be able to give us a little more detail, but this is how it's currently done and so we've kept it.
Right, I, I'm thinking there's res, there's private, public, and community. I'm thinking there's three different things, is, should this say public, do you think?
So you can apply for a community water source by special exception. Of course, with all of you knowing the history of the service authority, having bought those exact systems. Um, which is why they're highly regulated. So I don't. I don't know that we want.
So should this, could this say community slash public water and sewer, would that cover everything?
Okay.
That would be helpful, cause there, it kinda might leave something out.
And this seems like a simple question, but I just wanna be very clear, we wanna change that everywhere community water and sewer is addressed, right? It'll become community slash public water and sewer?
Yes, but the definition should separate.
Okay.
Public water should be service authority.
Okay.
Community water would be a private entity, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then you go down the rabbit hole of shared wells, et cetera, which is a conversation for another time.
Do we have any community sewer? Is there such a thing here?
Um, I believe there are some older, um, places that have what's called mastering fields, but I feel like they are.
Well, I guess in the future, it might be even more common, so I guess we should leave it.
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
I think the health department frowns upon those mastering.
Pardon me?
I believe the health department kinda frowns upon those mastering fields.
Well, they can frown all they want, but. But since they're code, we can still do it.
Right, but I guess the question is, should we do it? Does it present problems and?
I know, I know they do it up north where. It's harder to get ground to perk and it's rockier.
Makes sense.
It's very unlikely here, but I'm just saying it's possible.
It is possible, um, it does go down, you know, who's responsible for its maintenance, et cetera, et cetera.
Oh, yeah.
So it. It creates a, a rabbit hole we could certainly go down.
Okay, are we good?
R three?
Yes.
You changed to eighteen dwellings.
Oh, yes, we, yeah, I haven't started. We will not, we will not leave this behind.
Don't freeze by that one.
Okay, so we're on R three now and I just wanna make a quick note, it's seven. We still have a little bit to get through for article four, we probably are gonna have quite a bit to talk about for cluster and then we have to get through five. So I'll try to pick up the pace here, but if we need to pause, don't, feel free to stop me. Okay, so R three, so the big, big change here is what Heather just mentioned. In the existing ordinance, um, multifamily is addressed and multifamily elderly, we've condensed that. It's just multifamily dwellings now, but the big change that we've done here is we have bumped up the density from eight dwelling units per acre. To eighteen for multifamily dwellings. This is a big jump and you will not hurt our feelings if you think it's too much. What we did is we matched it to mixed use currently that you all have. But again, if that's too much, we can find something in the middle. We just feel like eight is a little low, developers are gonna be a little hesitant to come in and build, build any development with just. Eight dwelling units per acre, but we also are cognizant that eighteen may be a little bit too much, so what are we thinking?
Can you explain how you get to the number eighteen for such a large jump?
Yeah, so for this one specifically, it was a mix of things. It was looking at some other benchmark communities, seeing a pattern, and then it was also tying back to what's already in King George. So we looked at the mixed-use district, which is a similar, um, district to R three as far as the uses, residential uses would go. So that's where it came from, um, twelve is something we've also seen in some benchmarks. Sixteen. Eighteen is on the higher end, but. The, the final nail in the coffin for that decision was looking at the mixed-use district.
And, and it's something that we heard through community, um, engagement was a desire for more multifamily housing. So to make that, one, so that you can have more in a, in a single location without spreading it out too much. Plus to encourage developers to, to move forward with it, we felt like that number needed to, to come up. But we can, you know, adjust.
I have a question. With making this the same as mixed-use, does that? Is there a benefit to a developer to go the mixed-use route instead of just the standard multifamily? Cause I think mixed-use is, is the ultimate goal of having, you know, the coffee shops, the downtown, the et cetera. Is there, are we hurting ourselves by aligning it with the exact same dwelling unit per acre? Is that, am I making sense?
Yeah, I think, yeah, go ahead.
And I, and I would say that that's a legitimate question, if your goal is to, we really want the mixed-use. And we don't want just multifamily, then sure, that could be, you know, adjusted to sixteen. And have your, your mixed-use at eighteen, um, I think some of it would be. Location and the developer and, and what they want to do, um, you know, there's, they'll still choose. Between that, whatever is.
And two, just keeping in mind the other requirements for mixed-use.
Right.
What also, which we're not telling you anything you don't know, but it wouldn't just be, oh, I can get more density here, it would also be. Oh, I could get a little bit less, but I won't have to do X, Y, and Z, and I won't have to build commercial and. But I'm with Rebecca, if you all want mixed-use and you wanna have a second stab at it, then. Perhaps it's a good idea to not make them simpler.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
Yeah.
It, it's just something that staff has heard that, you know, the mixed-use is, is a more difficult ordinance. Why would I, I do that if I could do it by right or what have you here? And I, I just don't want us to not take that into consideration.
I think our quality is to push towards mixed-use, isn't it?
I mean, ultimately, I think, but to me. If you. You, if you level deck those to. It does disincentivize mixed-use, which I think mixed-use ultimately adds a little bit more benefit to the county. Because this was, this just looks like you can pack. Density without anything else that would accompany it.
So also to keep in mind, mixed-use has to be a rezoning. And it can only be applied currently in the three and three oh one corridor. In the three and three oh one, uh, settlement area.
Right, right.
Sorry, I, I said corridor, I meant settlement area.
I'd be more inclined to reduce the dwellings per acre, um, for R three.
Okay, I have a two-part question, does everyone wanna, are they, are you all good with having it where it is now at eight? Or do you want to increase it just not to eighteen?
We've gotta have ones that are more than, more than eight currently, right, or, I mean, ones that predate.
I, I couldn't confirm.
Eighteen sounds like a lot. Anybody have any thoughts?
I'm, I agree with you, eighteen sounds like a lot. I, I can't tell you exactly why, it just feels too high. I mean, we, we have made comments over the years about not wanting to. Get too dense, you know, the, the goal here is not. At least, my approach has been, the goal isn't to grow the county significantly. It's going to grow.
Right.
We accept that and we do need multifamily housing so that it can be more affordable, you know. Uh, easier to access, you know, a lot of reasons there for that. Uh, so eight may be too little, but eighteen just feels too high, I. Twelve. Maybe sixteen.
I think you said twelve, Mr. Meyer.
Yeah, it was a ten, twelve.
I will say some neighboring localities, just did a quick look, twelve seems to be what's happening next door, so.
Twelve sounds.
Who was that?
Yeah.
Pennsylvania. They have more districts.
And they've got more infrastructure.
But they do have one that's geared towards twelve lot units per acre.
Well, twelve sounds more palatable, um, for the near term to kinda make, so that we don't have. Excessive growth and density.
Okay, okay. There, anyone disagree? Alright, okay, um, I'm going to speed ahead, that's okay, if we're good on this. What do we feel about the front setback situation for this, R three? Do we feel the same way that we did in R one and R two, only one is necessary? We do have different setbacks for the different dwelling types, townhomes, multifamily, um, et cetera. But they're the same currently, but they are differentiated, I should say. But do you still want to nix the different right-of-way width idea? And I won't speak for anyone, but. It sounds like this is probably similar to R one and R two and it, if it's not needed in those two, it, it may not be needed here, but.
And the other thing to call out here as well is, we did increase this setback a bit. It, it's originally at ten, um, but there's another locality that, that we're working in and they're having an issue. Where in these types of developments, you've got road, sidewalk. Tiny, you know, front driveway and everyone parks and they're hanging over the sidewalk. So what's the point in having a sidewalk if everybody, you know, can't get their car into, you know, the front of the, um, lot there? And so that's why we went up to the fifteen feet, just to, to give a little more space so that hopefully sidewalks are usable. In the community, um, so I wanted to explain that.
How common is it really to have a right-of-way in a townhouse community?
So currently under our ordinance, I believe there's a threshold of once you get to a certain number of townhomes. Then you are required to do a VDOT road.
Required to do a what?
VDOT road, a state-maintained road.
For townhomes?
For townhomes, now that I think should be changed personally, because we've had problems with townhomes. That their roads are not maintained, et cetera, et cetera.
And VDOT accepts them?
If they are built to particular standards, so they look at. For example, I, I have a rezoning request for townhomes on my desk that VDOT is looking at, because they're over that threshold. And they look at things like, uh, street parking and, and things of that nature. So it, they will accept them, it's just to a, a different standard.
So you think that should be, that requirement should be done away with? Is that your feeling?
The ability to build multiple townhomes not on a state-maintained road, I think, should be taken away, personally.
I I agree. I I didn't know we were even doing that.
We do have some older townhomes in the Dogland District um that may predate our ordinance. And we had problems with the road collapsing and no one to hold responsible. Um so it certainly created an issue for those homeowners that, you know, paid maybe eighty thousand dollars for these townhomes that can't afford to fix their entire subdivisions, parking roads, areas. And it it certainly became an issue.
And that was a privately maintained road that was collapsing or?
Was. It was privately maintained.
Okay, well.
And I think a lot of people buy those homes thinking that they are publicly maintained.
Right.
They are, they have that security, and it's rather upsetting to hear different.
Was there an HOA or was this pre-HOA days?
I believe it was pre-HOA. Or there may not have been an active HOA to hold responsible.
Those were more parking lot type. Is it, when you get to townhouses, there's, there's ones that have no driveways and sidewalks, and you park right up parking spots.
Yes.
Then there's ones with driveways. That have sidewalks. So there's, those are kinda two different beasts.
So the one I'm referencing had the pull-in parking spot. I think more typical now is the garage and one-car parking is the more traditional way of today's townhomes. Um but that's not.
Even those require off-street parking.
Off-street communal parking, um you know, you have people visit. Where do they park is a concern that we have. And, you know, King George doesn't have a whole lot of experience with with town townhomes, especially not under any current.
Fun fact, Spotsylvania no longer lets you count a garage as a parking space. And you can't use your driveway as a count, uh parking space if it's under, I guess, twenty-four feet in length.
A good, good consideration, Mr. DeBree.
You thought tonight was gonna be boring, didn't you?
I never think these work sessions are gonna be boring, I assure you.
May I pull us back to the question, just for sake of time? Um if we want to keep the differentiation of right-of-way width for front setback, or do we wanna do one? We veered, but.
I think, I didn't think we really went off on a tangent. I think we're trying to make that mean nothing. I think you're correct that we shouldn't be doing uh townhomes on public rights away. I think they should be all private under HOA.
I I think we mean the opposite.
You wanna put townhomes on public rights away?
Yes, I want them state-maintained.
Opposite sides.
I I thought we were on the same page, I'm sorry.
Me too.
I'd rather see this go to one dimension, you know, not two columns, but a single column.
Okay.
Pick the number, personally.
I think you have to just make a one-size. It it it's tough, because early I mentioned two different ways. There was actually a third different way, and that's the garage in the back in an alley. And and then you would have a twenty-foot front yard in a townhouse, which would be very goofy. But maybe that's a special exception type situation where you say, the garages are in the back, and we're gonna, I I mean, if that comes up, I think we would all say, okay, let's do it. So I I think you go with a sta, maybe we just take a fifty-foot, uh fifty-foot standard. Uh, roll with it.
Okay.
Twenty foot, yeah, twenty, twenty, twenty.
Twenty, twenty feet, okay.
That sounds reasonable.
Anyone disagree? Okay. So for R three, one setback for each thing, twenty feet.
Twenty, twenty, twenty-five, right?
Okay. Twenty, twenty, twenty-five. Okay, the other, two more things I wanna call out here for R three before we move on. Hopefully, um pretty quick. So again, back to the height conversation where we've introduced maximum heights for R three. We do have a higher height limit for multifamily dwellings at forty-five feet. This would ideally be a three-story, this would accommodate a three-story apartment building. I will remind you that the fire marshal did say two-story residential, three-story commercial. But here are two thoughts. In one regard, whether it's commercial or residential, three stories is three stories, so you you could look at it that way. But also going back to his concern, not so much of the space, but having the ability to get to people on the third story. So you have two things to weigh here.
Can anybody remember what the requirement was for residential units being sprinkled?
It's over three, wasn't it?
Right.
It's over three.
We've somewhat debated about this before. Does the county have no plans to get? Does the county have no plans to get row ladder trucks?
Yeah, I mean, a- at the time, we we didn't, right? I mean, this came up, this came up during the um development of two of five and three, three oh one, and said, we didn't have, it was, they were prohibitively expensive, especially when we were trying to maintain our existing fleet, you know, just for, just for normal public service, public safety requirements.
So Chief Moody, in his response, did note that they currently carry a twenty-four-foot ladder. Now, I know they certainly would like a bigger ladder truck, but they do not currently have one. A consideration could be made if the, if they go to three stories, can we require them to sprinkle it regardless of what the building code states? Cause if the concern is getting bodies out, live bodies, I should say, not, um, you know, is that an option? What do other localities do that don't have?
That's really not something I have seen in other localities to require the sprinkler.
Outside of a building code.
Right. I don't know, I'm like you, I'm not a building code official. I don't know if sometimes the number of units triggers.
I know there's a threshold, I'm just not positive of what it is.
Right.
Um the other thing is, is that assumably, R three is gonna be rezoned. So if a developer comes in and he wants a variance to that height restriction and says, I'll give you this bright, shiny, tall enough ladder truck, you know, that should come into consideration. But you can't ask for it, for the record. Propers are voluntary.
But you can say, we're concerned about this because we can't rescue people on the third story, on the fourth story. So we're gonna say no to this because of that, and they can go, no, no, don't say no, we'll give you that.
I mean, it's a future thing, right? I mean, I don't, I don't really take too much exception to it at the moment. Um but I'm open for the discussion of merits one way or another.
Well, if you just go two-story, then if someone wants to do three-story, they can always do special exception. Or we can do, if we get a ladder truck, we can do a text amendment, right? Except the third, I think you just go two.
So when you get proper, it has to address a need. So if you allow forty-five feet, which can't serve forty-five feet, then they're not addressing the need because you allow forty-five feet.
I'm, I'd be really concerned about putting something in here that says you can go to a height that we already know we can't provide fire safety to.
Well, right, does that open the county for liability of any type?
Good question.
I would feel bad about doing that, so legally or just morally, certainly wouldn't feel good from a moral standpoint. So I, I say we need to cut it back to thirty-five. And and if the fire department ever gets to the point where they have that capability, then I would have no hesitation about raising that limit.
It would be a simple text amendment, yes, sir.
Did it, did you have a, I'm sorry?
It would be a simple text amendment for us to come back and change it, should we put in our CIP, get funding, et cetera, and receive that that ladder truck.
Then if a developer came in here and we were of the mindset to have a fairly large development, and they wanted to go the extra height, then they would understand what they have to do because of why we set the limit where we did.
So my, my question would be, when would, what would ever constitute a bigger ladder, if you always leave it at? What would ever constitute a bigger, a bigger truck, if you, if you never?
Well, if you, if you put the height limit at thir, say thirty-five, that's a two-story building with a roof on it. And we can reach that and rescue people.
I understand.
Now, if the developer decides that he really wants a taller building, but he sort of understands that the only way he's ever gonna get that approved is to buy a truck for the county, then that's the size.
I mean, I guess you could argue that, I I think it goes back to, if I remember this, the discussion, it was basically fiscally driven as far as budgetary constraints and and cost prohibitiveness because like in Dalren, there are, you know, we've got a number of hotels and other commercial buildings that exceed that height currently.
And we rely on mutual aid for that.
Right, exactly. And so, um it's not that, it's not that the need may not be there currently, but I think it would be a nice um incentive for a developer to be so, so generous as to offer one should they want to come do that.
So I think I'm hearing two-story. Any disagreement with limiting this to two-story?
It's good.
Right, okay. One more thing to touch on here for for R three before we have to move on. So currently, open space for the R three district is based on lot sizes, maybe how many lots? Louis, correct me if I'm wrong, in the subdivision ordinance. What we're proposing is to just make it a flat rate of twenty percent of the of the development would be open space rather than having it con, be constituted by how many lots and the size of them. Um this is something that's generally done. It's not broken down into a calculation. It's more or less a set amount. And then you have standards for that open space, which would be in Article eight of the ordinance that we're doing for you. So we haven't gotten there just yet. Um but that would just set some standards for it, what it could and couldn't be, what can be in there, that sort of thing. Any immediate thoughts on this?
Two things, we're, we're at thirty-five feet on the last one?
We are.
Okay, alright, two stories, two feet.
Yes.
Twenty percent non-RPA, is that?
So for open space, and Rebecca, this isn't just cluster. I don't, you can't ask, a locality can't require that open space determine or exclude RPA or sensitive areas. So it 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 could and 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 King George likely would include RPA.
That's just for cluster.
Rebecca?
Right, that would be for cluster. So in, for 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 R three, you could exclude that and say that it needs to be usable open space.
And that's the difference between bright, just normal and cluster. You could have, you know, this has to be a walking trail, it has to be a bike trail. Has to be a field for the community um usable in some manner. And again, that's something that would go into what will be Article eight, which is your community design standards.
And typically, there's language there that says, you know, it can't include the street, the parking, you know, other stuff that's open. You can e- exclude those things from the open space if you want.
There's just many places in King George where you can have fifty percent of the property be RPA, so.
Yeah.
You're, you're you're, you're in a situation there if you want usable space, that's the only reason I was saying.
What's that?
Tough to, to judge, or is it tough to?
Tough to judge where they're.
Do you have that on maintenance, or it can't be, it's usable space?
I am completely against double dipping of the RPA, and that is inclusive of stormwater uh requirements as well. RPA is already protected. We should be protecting things that are not already protected. And open space should be usable. RPA is not a usable space. It is a vegetative buffer.
And just to reiterate that we haven't gotten to these standards themselves yet, but what's in your existing ordinance is that open, eighty percent of open space in this context um shall be exclusive of wetlands and RPAs. So that could carry over. This is in your subdivision ordinance.
That's actually for cluster subdivisions. For other ones, it does say the um the percentages below shall be exclusive of the hundred-year floodplain, wetlands, utility easements, or other, other uh physical encumbrances.
Don't listen to me. Do not listen to me.
So our cluster ordinance tried not to allow them to double dip that RPA, but it is not in line with our state code.
Yes, no, that is a definite no-no.
Maybe a wrong time to ask this, but speaking of clusters, can we put anything in there that would require clusters to be served by public water and sewer? Cause that's a question we get all the time with the minimum lot, what's it, forty thousand square foot for a cluster? If you've got an A two.
I think, isn't that step down for water, sewer, uh public water, public sewer?
Uh A two, I don't think it differentiates between, and this purely from my memory, Louis is looking it up, but I don't think that it differentiates in A two um for public or private. Um in our districts, it does differentiate the lot sizes for public water versus private. Water and sewer versus private water.
Yes, so if if we're baking this stuff in the cake now, is there any way that we could stipulate, or would there be an appetite to stipulate that clusters have to be served by public water and sewers so that we don't have all these lots concentrated on one another with with little individual well and septics that are right on top of their neighbors? As opposed to being able to get it served by public water and sewer um standard, that may also be an incentivization for a developer to proffer up something.
So I, I think that we're gonna talk about this more during the cluster, but um if a developer can get fifty lots, whether they are clustered or not clustered, he is going to put in those fifty lots, is something to keep in mind.
He's gonna.
Whether it is a cluster subdivision or a traditional subdivision, he's going to put in that subdivision of fifty lots.
But you figure, they can save a whole pile of money by clustering it, right?
Right.
Possibly, yes.
Less road, less lot of things, right? So.
But these ladies have a whole presentation.
Okay, is that, is that another night?
There's a whole cluster section.
I'm jumping, I'm reading it, I'm sorry, okay.
So where, where were we? Twenty percent open space.
Twenty percent open space, it's already protected by our current ordinance, right? On the, on RPA and all that.
Correct.
So now we just gotta fix cluster, but we're not there yet.
Are we, are we done, okay. So we have two more quick stops to make. I just wanna touch on commercial and industrial before we get to cluster because cluster will take our time. So the big things here, I don't even remember anymore. Um these had very little changes. The commercial, we've reduced the C two setback to fifteen feet. I can't remember what it was, maybe thirty? Yep, thirty. Um and then, again, we've introduced the maximum heights, they're thirty-five feet, so nothing to change there, if we're all good with that. Um and this, we did not introduce. Um, and this, we did not introduce a differentiate, differentiation of right-of-way for the front setback. So there's just one, nice and easy. Do we agree with the reduction in setback for C two? This was really in response to public engagement and the cluttering and
Yeah, there's.
The look of it.
Yeah, there was a lot of desire to say, hey, let's make our commercial look nice. Let's have it walkable. And so by reducing that setback, you can have, you know, a del- a development that is closer along the sidewalk for that walkability. They can have nice, you know, front landscaping, put the parking to the side or to the rear, um, to kind of make it look better, make it easier to access. So that's the thinking there with reducing that. Anyone wanna change that? Don't like it? Okay, hearing none.
Okay, and then for the industrial, uh, we just added some clarity that buffers are not to be in the setback, again, for similar reasons. Just to keep those separate. Um, and then we have increased rear setbacks to twenty feet. And I wanna say that those were ten in the existing ordinance. And this would be for both principal structures and any accessory structures. Any heartburn? No?
I'll add one thing while we're here at industrial, um, and we saw this in the, I think, the staff comments, um, but I'll go ahead and, and address it with all. You notice in the beginning where we've got, you know, some new names for the districts? And then there was a comment, well, we, you know, all the others kind of go C one, C two, I one, and then we've got just I. Why not have that I two? The crazy thing there is, if we change that to an I two, that means a zoning map amendment. And you have to notify all of the landowners that are currently zoned I, that you're changing their zoning. And even though it's not really changing, you know, anything, i- it would be a big headache and possibly pot stirrer. Um, and so that's why we've not proposed to change that to an I two. Just wanted to give that tidbit in case anyone else, I think staff looked at it and was like, come on, let's make it all nice. And we agree, but.
We were at it.
Yeah.
We did have that and then we said, no, wait, we're not doing this.
Yeah, wouldn't you put it that way?
All right, okay. Two quick touches on plan development and then we will get to cluster. And dive into that. Wake up. Okay, plan development, minor changes here. We added a little bit of context for what a plan development is. This was at staff's direction, just so that people are a little more clear as to what the purpose of a plan development is. So that's gonna be section four-eight-one there. And then also a big change here that we've done is we have introduced a waiver provision that will apply to all plan developments, which at this time would just be your resort community and your mixed-use districts. And that's basically just allowing some deviation from the regulations, um, if, if you see fit. Do we wanna dive into that at all? Does anyone agree, disagree on that? It would be item A five in section four-eight-two if you have here.
Four-eight-two.
Mm-hmm.
Purpose of this development may vary from account.
And again, this is just allowing a waiver, a waiver process that would follow a special exception. Which would also, it would already be coming under a close eye because it would need to be a rezoning, right? I mean, you have no, do you have any RCs or MU's right now?
That's just a way if you didn't wanna do it under the normal, you just go special exception.
Correct. Just add some wiggle room in there. Everyone on board? Okay. Hearing nothing, I'm gonna go with yes.
Okay.
Okay, and then a couple more things here. So for the RC district, this is your resort community. There were no district standards provided in the existing ordinance. So what we did as a starting point of conversation, if we wanna get to cluster and get through Article five and then circle back to this, we can do that. But what we've done is we've just, it's matching mixed use right now, so we can tweak any of these standards. And this is gonna be four-eight-three, table four-point-seven. This isn't a new district. Of course, you already have resort community, but in the, in the existing ordinance, there are no standards provided.
The eighteen would definitely go to twelve, right?
Correct, yep. If you want it to match R three. And then assuming you wanna leave mixed use alone as it is to make it more inviting.
Same with multifamily dwellings?
This is also a place where that forty-five feet for multifamily dwellings would be bumped to thirty-five.
Right.
Hmm.
Five on single, would you do that? Well, you make single, though.
You're talking about density, right?
Yes.
And remind me again, there are no RCs.
We did not have any current RCs. We've had a few apply or plan to apply, but no current.
Okay.
Were they townhouse or were they?
Um, the one that we most recently heard was, um, Hope Retreat. That was a resort community. The church kind of sleepaway camp deal.
Yeah, that is quite rude.
Yes, sir. But it could be a lot of, in different ways it could be. You know, a resort community. I'm drawing a blank, I'm sorry. Um, but anything that you have multiple dwelling units that are owned by the same, um, property owner and you have amenities and things of that nature.
So on single families, five the right number? We're at eight on townhouses. We're like multifamily, we're good at twelve, right?
Doesn't there have to be like a big anchor, bless you, for a resort community? Like what, what do we have in here that'd be like the big, like, like a water slot? I mean, you know, one just started, yeah, like what is, what's the? Should we spell out something in here that like this is what constitutes? Like this is the draw that makes a?
We have had, um, some large agricultural properties that want to do like, um, these glamping style resorts. Um, those have become very trendy. Um, you know, Dude Ranch, um, that, that's the sort of thing.
I know that the shooting range keeps coming to my mind. I'm like, that's why I wanna think, we wanna put some parameters around it so that we don't have something like that come.
Well, it has to go through a review process. It's not a by right use.
Right.
It would always have to apply for rezoning under our current zoning. We don't have any RC zoning classification. So you have full control over any project that would come in and apply as a RC.
Well, I'll ask.
And, and, oh, I was just gonna say, and to that specific example, the next two work sessions, the next one particularly about the use matrix, we cannot permit gun ranges in an RC district. So then you don't even have to have them.
All right, so we can talk about this.
Yes.
All right.
Talk about that.
That's what you're saying. Pushing it on down.
Every one of these is a rezoning.
There we go.
For resort community as well as mixed use development.
Well, right, right. I think we can, I think we can definitely, we, we wanna, I think we want to underscore what would constitute an RC versus just somebody trying to come in with a multi, with a high-density.
Bunch of rental units.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
Well, and it also goes back to the purpose and intent statement at the beginning of the article, which I'll let you read it if you want. It's, uh, four-one-three, and then you're gonna go to E. It's basically just saying it's a continuous piece of land owned by the same person. It has some tourist accommodations and it's focused on recreation and natural resources. So kind of like what Heather was saying, glamping, I, I don't wanna say dude ranch, we're in Virginia, but, uh, you know, something like it. Um, so not just, not just housing, you would have something to do with the setting itself that is contributing. Which again, will, you know, be solidified by what you allow in your uses.
Okay. Sorry.
So it's all special exception and we're twelve per, we're good.
But it's non-permanent residential, right? I mean, people come and they stay a period of time and then they leave and other people backfill behind them.
Is, is that typically the intent or?
It, well, you could have that, you could have those as uses. So what, what I, in my planner brain now in twenty-twenty-two, that would be short-term rentals, which would be existing in these single-family homes, townhomes, et cetera. But you could also have as a use, you know, camping tents and then have standards that they have to be, glamping tents are not just a tent from Cabela's that you pop up. I mean, they're practically tiny homes, you know, on a somewhat permanent foundation.
I'm pretty positive that the resort community uses the word transient.
Here's, um, the current ordinance says this district is intended to ensure that resort communities will be primarily visitor, visitor-oriented developments, which may include permanent residential units as a secondary use. So like for your groundskeeper or something, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, big timber, okay? No, okay, we're not gonna talk about that. All right, all right.
So we're good, five, five for single family, twelve, we wanna take it down for multifamily? Okay. All right, the next thing here, I keep saying the next thing and then we'll get to cluster, but there's just one more thing. Mixed use district, we made a little change here. It's table four-point-eight. We have added some maximum densities for townhouses and duplexes. They were not included in the existing ordinance. Um, and so this one has the, the most tiered effect, if you will, for densities. Single family is five, duplexes are eight dwelling units per acre, townhouses are twelve, and then the most you get is multifamily at eighteen.
We didn't have townhouses in there?
I don't think so. Louis, Heather, do you know if I just?
I thought we excluded duplexes when we did that.
I remember we had a lot of discussion about duplexes.
Do we wanna take those out here now?
Yeah, I would take duplexes out.
Take duplexes out. Anyone disagree?
Eh, yeah.
Cut them, cut them. All right, they're cut. What about townhouses? It's twelve dwelling units per acre.
We still had a max of eighteen.
Still had a max of eighteen. Yep, we did change that.
Right. That, that was existing in.
That was existing, mm-hmm.
I don't think we ever talked about townhouses.
It, it kinda just.
I don't think we ever mentioned.
It's in, it is apparently permitted, uh, duplexes and townhomes under our mixed use are, they are permitted.
Duplexes? Wow.
But you still wanna cut them? You seem very confident in that. Okay. All right, those are cut.
I didn't, I wonder how that slipped through. I, I know we, there was like a lot of motions about that.
Well, now you can make it right.
Uh, yeah, it's just two single-family townhouses and multifamily dwellings. And I mean, and I think that's.
Okay. Are we good at twelve or does ten sound better? Or the other end, does sixteen sound better?
Eight, eight is in our other ordinance, so your town on a mixed use, you're at twelve. All of it's rezoned, right? So it's.
It's all, it's all on a case by case.
That's correct. And the discussion earlier was that your mixed use should be more incentivized. So if we're gonna, you know, keep with higher numbers than your R three and your others, we need to consider that here too.
And a consideration for
Okay.
mixed use that's not anywhere else. Currently, it does allow for density bonuses, which could make the density even greater.
And we didn't change any of the, the ratios of commercial to residential here.
You said there's density bonuses in there?
There is currently, and I don't think we've changed it. Do you still have it in front of you, Heather, Louis?
Density bonus, if open space equals sixty percent or more, the total site area.
It's a little note right underneath, um.
What, what is it currently? For density bonus for mixed use. Well, it's not in this handy-dandy chart, so, um, it's not readily.
Well, we go with ten. And then I'll get you to twelve with the bonus.
Open space equals sixty percent or more, it's twenty-five percent.
And just another thought, this density bonus is another, when you're comparing it to R three, is another reason a developer would lean towards mixed use is because of the density bonus.
Yeah, it's the same, the sixty percent with a twenty-five percent increase in density. It's, it's what we currently have.
Yeah.
Twelve, we go to fifteen with the bonus.
And that does not include single-family dwelling.
I'm good with that.
Good with that? Okay. All right, so.
Good, okay.
Yep.
Okay, so just to confirm, single family is five, townhouses we're leaving at twelve, and multifamily we're leaving at eighteen.
Correct.
Okay. All right, it's time, we've made it to cluster.
We have arrived.
Okay, cluster. So what I'll do is I'll just go through these slides and tell you where we are and just be patient with me because it's eight o'clock, so my brain is wearing down. And then we can talk it out loud and see where we need to go with it. So cluster is used to preserve sensitive areas, whether that's water, RPA, steep slopes, farmland, agland, forest land, you name it. If it's an environmental prize and it needs to be saved, that's what cluster is doing. Um, it encourages, of course, compact development to steer away from those sensitive areas. Um, and in rural areas like King George, usually it's geared towards agland or forest land. Um, in King George's case, you also have Chesapeake areas that it's used for. It's a range in Virginia, you typically see forty to seventy percent of open space required. Some localities require lower, some require more. Um, it's up to you, this code, state code does not require, I think it's a minimum amount, but it doesn't give you the threshold. It's up to you to decide. Um, and then their state code also allows a greater density than what is allowed by right, um, which is another piece of it. It's not something that's required. You don't have to allow density bonuses. I would dare say it's maybe not something that King George is super interested in, but perhaps we are. It would work similarly to the way it just worked in mixed use. It would be a percentage, um, that you could jump up. So if you look up here, I know they're tiny, but this is just to show you the difference between what a traditional subdivision would look like and then ideally what a cluster would look like. Again, these are just, um, for context, these are not, you know, the end-all-be-all of cluster development. But you can see especially on the lower one, it's, it's steering away from that water or let's pretend that some of that is steep slopes. So you are gathering your lots away from those sensitive areas. And that in and of itself is the main reason for clustering. It's not to get more lots, it's not to get more density, it's just to preserve sensitive areas. Um, so then what we did here is we have put all of your existing cluster divisions into a chart. We haven't changed any so far. The only thing that we have done, and this is in response to public engagement and talking with staff, we have introduced a setback for the entire development so that it's setting back further from the road, other lot lines, and so that it's not on the edge of the development, if you will. That is the only change that we have made. And we've had some discussions with staff about ways that the cluster development can be improved or if it's at its best right now and if it is best serving King George County the way it is. In our research, we haven't seen any stark differences to other localities. You're pretty, you're pretty on par with everyone. Um, you're allowing a little bit more density than you are in your base districts with those fractional amounts. Um, so nothing, nothing is an oddball compared to your neighbors. You're pretty level. Um, so that is why we have not changed anything. And just to reiterate, the reason we've added this whole development setback is just in discussions that we've had with staff and then hearing some public engagement, just setting that development further back from the road. is just in discussions that we've had with staff and then hearing some public engagement, just setting that development further back from the road. With that, I'm going to stop, give Rebecca a chance to add anything she wants to. Heather, Louis, Richard, if you want to add anything, and then I'll give it to you guys.
I don't have anything to add, I, you know, I think, you know, what Steph said is, is exactly right. We looked at other communities, they seem to be very similar to what you have. Um, the only difference might be requiring a little more open space, if you wanted to do that. Some localities do this additional setback, which we've incorporated here, which I think would help, you know, the look and feel of this open space concept, um, and.
Right, right, and it, just a couple of things I should have started with. So the code of Virginia sometimes will say a lot, and sometimes it will say very little. And in the cluster regard, it doesn't say too much, but it does say that you cannot require that the open space either identify or exclude RPA, steep slope, sensitive areas, you have to just let it be. Which, in a place such as King George with lots of RPA, it's just an
Lots of slope.
unfortunate coincidence, for lack of a better word. Um, and you also, um, it has to be in all of your residential and all of your agricultural, so you can't sort of pick and choose where it's going. Um, some localities can that aren't required to have cluster, but you are required to have cluster if you have ten percent or greater growth in, in the latest decade, which King George does have. So you do have to have cluster, you already have it now, but, um, you do have to have it in all residential and all ag.
Did you read that, um, based on the code recently?
Yes.
Okay.
On the way to Iraq.
I read it today and it looked to me like, yes, ten percent of population growth, but it had to be provided in at least forty percent of the base zoning of your county. But you're saying it has to be over all zoning districts?
Um, let me look and see. Rebecca, do you have anything off the top of your head?
No.
Stephanie, if I can ask you for, like, for reference with some of the other localities, um, benchmarking against us, how do they compare with their ratio of A two and A three versus R one, R two, and, and the reason I ask is because King George is so comprised of agricultural in general, and specifically so much A two, that it seems like the default for a lot of these builders is to go with a clustering, because as we chatted earlier, it's a lot cheaper for them. And it, you know, it's, it's guised under the auspices of going green, but it's just cheaper. And so, I'm just wondering how, do the other, do the other localities nearby, do they, do they have prohibitions like we discussed earlier about, you know, you can only do this if we've got certain water and sewer, um, amenities available, or?
Cluster is funny, and I don't, I can't say with certainty if it's because it doesn't happen that much and everyone's just required to have it so that they, they've come up with something to put in there. We, I didn't see much, we haven't seen much of those things. Um, it's really the bare minimum, lot size, it's lot width.
Right.
Um, that's not to say that they don't, and we could certainly take a second look, but at immediate looking, no, we, uh, we didn't see anyone that says you have to have community water and sewer. Again, not to say that someone out there doesn't or couldn't.
But you're seeing where there's step down, where, where the lot size can come down if you have public sewer, or if you have public water, or if you have both, just like we did with the R three, right?
Um, Loudon, is it Loudon? Loudon has a lot going on, theirs is pretty, um, layered and hefty. We have seen something similar to that. So we need to get some more together for you guys with that direction in mind. We can, because I, I don't have the answer.
Lot sizes were controlled, the bonus came with public sewer.
Well, well, yeah, I mean, a lot of the lot size, the driver for the lot size is the requirement for the drain field and the well and setbacks from your neighbor, right? And then the, if you're conventional per, you've gotta have the hundred percent. Yeah, so I, absolutely, if we could, you know, if we could, if we could bake that in, I think that would, that would be great, because I mean, you, that, every time, we always get those public comments about that, right? Like, why are they building so tight and the drain field's right next to the property line and it, it's just, we get that all the time, right? So.
So the state code does say that, um, in establishing, uh, such standards, conditions, and criteria, the governing body may, in its discretion, include provisions it determines appropriate to ensure quality development, preservation of open space, and compliance with the comprehensive plan and land use ordinances. If cluster development is otherwise subject to the applicable land use ordinance of the locality, however, the locality shall not impose more stringent land use requirements for such cluster development.
Well, I don't know that, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking more in terms of public utilities than more stringent land use.
And it does, it does mention water and sewer, um, in the next paragraph, but it says the locality shall not prohibit the extension of water and sewer from adjacent property to a cluster development, provided cluster development is located within the area designated for water and sewer services by the, um, county. It doesn't say that we can prohibit, or that we, yeah, or can prohibit.
Cannot prohibit.
The extension, yeah, but it doesn't say we have to require it.
But it doesn't prohibit us from requiring it, I, correct.
I mean, if you read into the locality shall not impose more stringent land use requirements for such cluster development.
So in other words, you would have to require all major subdivisions connect to water and sewer?
Right.
Which would be.
Well, I think.
You would have to have utility that can serve those.
Right, which means profits.
Not for by right development.
Well, no, not for, not for, but a by right would be different. I mean, I'm only, I'm only saying can we limit it just to clustering, I guess is the.
I'm, I'm with Louis, and Rebecca and I talked about this on the way down. This is just where sometimes code makes you wanna bang your head up against a wall, because at times it can be explicitly clear, and then other times it, it makes you chase your own tail. So could we, just not being an attorney, could we maybe have your county attorney take a look at it and see what they think from that standpoint? Take a look at that portion of state code. Let's just say we went with what I agree with Louis. If you look at it in that one sentence that says you can't impose more stringent requirements, I would say you can't have them, you can't require water and sewer, but maybe an attorney would look and say, no, that's arguable. You have some space where it says the locality may impose whatever requirements it seems necessary.
And I think one thing that maybe could be done here, similar the way that it's in the R one, R two, when you've got public water and sewer, it's one lot size, and when you don't, it's a different lot size. And so you can do the same thing in the A two, A three, you know, right now, A two, forty thousand square feet, basically an acre. Um, and that could be when you don't have public water and sewer, but if you're going to create public water and sewer, we'll let you make those smaller and let you have, you know, greater density.
Yeah, shoot.
So, to be clear, you're going from two-acre lots to forty-acre, forty thousand
Square feet.
Which is just under an acre to even smaller lots, if you do what Rebecca suggests, as a by right in an agricultural district.
But you, I'm thinking forty thousand is too small.
I, I think it is too, especially off your for well and septic, right?
It has been successfully done, but that threshold is up to the commission.
Which one, what are you saying, the half acre's too small?
The forty thousand square feet is just under an acre.
One acre's fine for well. Yeah, but no, you've got thirty-five lots in a row.
But, um, keep in mind that the that the density calculation has to be the same as if, at least the same as if they were not clustering. So if I have eighty acres in A two, I can put forty houses there, when I cluster, I still have to be able to have forty houses there, I can.
Yeah.
Is that, that's right, right?
So we're somewhat limited then.
So if, so if you make a lot, I'm sorry, if you make a lot sizes bigger, you're also going to have to limit the open space that they would provide.
Yeah, that goes back to your point in the code, right? You can't put more restrictions on the land.
But, I'm, I mean, you could say that you do have to make it in, that the cluster for A two, instead of two acres, will now make it an acre and a half instead of forty acres, but then they would only dedicate less open space because they still have to get the same amount of lots. They would be bigger, but we would get less open space.
That's why we're similar to the other counties.
Well, shoot, um, yeah, I was thinking we could, I forgot that that was, like, I thought there was some way to mitigate that, but it doesn't, I mean, am I the only one that's thinking that that's, I mean, they're just popping up everywhere, right? So I mean, we, we get the complaints that they're, it's, it's tight density. All water and sewer are very close to one another, it's Mr. DeBries' point, it's, you know, you've got several houses in a row with weird, weird layouts where the drain fields and the wells and everything are, a lot of times on narrow roads that aren't being widened, no planes.
No gutter, no sidewalk.
Exactly, no curb, gutter sidewalks.
And no fire.
Right.
Now, curb, gutter sidewalks, you can address in your design standards.
So that's probably gonna be the way we can at least address some of the aesthetic concerns, right?
Um, the other thing that comes to mind is one of those cluster subdivisions, they consider connecting to public water and sewer, but they were not. I think the requirement is two hundred and fifty feet you must connect.
And they were like.
They were just outside of that. So maybe that limitation of two hundred and fifty feet should be expanded.
That gonna get us in trouble with other zoning districts?
Or should it be with all major subdivisions? I think if you keep it with all major subdivisions, you're safe. But then again, with that connection requirement, we should reach out to service authority and get their opinion on that as well, before we're voluntarily.
That would also be something we would do when we set up our requirements that, right?
And we also have, um, in our, I believe it's our comprehensive plan, that if it is not within our sediment air, a sediment area, we cannot require them to connect except for that two hundred and fifty-foot rule, so we wanna make sure that we're even across the board.
Yeah, yeah, we wanna do consistently.
Subdivision right now, it's within so many feet, is that two hundred and fifty feet?
I believe it's two hundred and fifty feet, and that's purely from my memory, so take that with what you will.
Shoot.
I'm also, I, I did go to the state code, and I'm with Mr. DeBries. It does say, any such locality shall provide in its zoning or subdivision ordinances applicable to a minimum of forty percent of the unimproved land contained in residential and ag zoning districts cluster of single-family. So, thinking about that and thinking about that your community is largely A one and A two, if we know that one of those districts is larger and contains at least forty percent of the unimproved land, it may be a possibility that you allow it only in that district and not the other ag district. Now, it does say residential, so I think in terms of residential, you would have to include it in all residential districts, but you don't have that much residential sound land, so it wouldn't impact that, you know, they're not gonna come ask to rezone and do, you know, that.
I feel like we've looked at that in the past, and we do exclude A one, which is a good portion. Um, we have very little A three. And that's why it's allowed in A two and A three for agricultural, because we had to. I wanna say.
But to me, the way it's written now, it's allowed in all of your districts, is that not?
Uh, not A one.
It's not an A one. Right, it's not.
Yeah, A two, A three, R one, R two, and R three.
Yep, okay.
So, and the A threes that you do have are teeny-tiny.
Very, they're really old, predated subdivisions, pretty, pretty usual. And it's, it's like a little pocket of A three, it's not planned by any.
So really, the, yeah, the concern is the A two.
Could it become an overlay? Kind of like, um, we'll only allow them in certain portions of the county, is that?
Give it, give it.
I have seen, there is, who did we look at? There is a community that created a map and says, here are the portions of the county where you can do cluster. And they have dictated that on a map.
So if we pulled, and I, I'm just shooting in the dark here, if we pulled a map that showed our rough topography and excluded those areas and our more RPAs, and we met that forty percent threshold, then we would be legal. And then we could look at things like narrow country roads, things like that.
You could, um.
I, I don't think that it's necessarily against clustering, it'd be, be getting more credit than they deserve, is what's the heartburn.
It's a, it's an economical way out, a lot of times.
Right.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I understand it. But it packs a lot onto, like we said, we get the complaints quite frequently that you pack a lot of density into a small area on a narrow road, and it's not really anything we can do about it. And to agree, we get that, that concern as well about the well and septic and the environmental impacts thereof, but, um, we've just got a number of them that we looked at that one day where, you know, they're just, they're on a narrow two-lane road, where you could tell they're just formerly fields, now you've got like house seeds that just grew up overnight.
My only concern, and I remember which community it was that I looked at, that, that did have what you're talking about, um, would be in creating those, if the objective is to, to steer away from the steep slopes and, and all of those things, that is the goal of the whole preservation cluster. I don't know if someone could, you know, sue the county and say you're only, you know, you're not following the true intent of, of cluster. That would be my only thought and concern there, um, but I would need to do more research, maybe have your county attorney consider that as well, um.
So we were able to pull up our percentage, and forty-nine percent of the county is A two, thirty-seven percent is C one. A one? A one, sorry, the colors got me off.
So it's forty-nine was A two, and what was A one, Heather, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
What was the percentage A one?
Thirty-seven.
I knew it was eighty-something. I knew it was eighty something, crazy.
So as is, I mean, you're meeting that, you know, forty percent rule, if you, you know, shift, you'll obviously have to take in some A one areas to, to meet the forty percent requirement, probably.
But this, um, this breakdown is just the zoning district as a whole, not necessarily the unimproved parcels in those zoning districts. So I think that's probably why they did it like this, to be safe and just exclude, um, A one, cause, yeah, but.
So I see a couple of options, we can pursue, look further into what Heather has suggested about mapping it out. Or for the A two, A three, we could mimic the R one, R two and say, here's your lot size, if you're not on public water sewer, here's a smaller lot size if you are. Keeping in mind that some of the issue already is how many homes that are going into these areas. What's the group feel, what would you like to pursue?
Let's go around, I mean, I don't, what is?
We, we can't hear you.
Good, Ms. Williamson.
I'm certainly in the mindset to encourage the development of, of, you know, county owned water and sewer. And I agree with you that on the smaller lots, y- you don't want it. My experience here in the county is, is you, you, we've got a lot of land that's not very percaleable. So if you start trying to figure out how to do a drain field, it can get difficult and then you turn into those little package units that use alternative methods, uh, which I'm not, I don't know, I'm not real fond of them, but, and I, I suspect, although I don't know, that they're a lot more expensive to maintain, um.
And installed.
But I'm hesitant to, so, so that's one thing I want to, would like to try to do and that leads me to this idea of if you're on public water and sewer and both, you could, you'll allow them a smaller lot size to develop on. I don't wanna turn into a, a Stafford County where you've got subdivisions though on little narrow roads, you know, that create problems, I'm not sure those two are totally separable, um. Well, I mean, if we, if we encourage the development of the, the, um, utility system, it would help the authority, I would think. Although there's, there's an expense that there, um. I don't know, I, I, I think on one hand, I would, I would like to do something to encourage the use of public water and sewer and drop the lot size a little bit for when that is something they're willing to do. Part of the proffer then would have to be.
Lot size and, and density?
Well, can we, we can't change overall density, can we?
Um, you can increase the density, but you can't make it less.
So what's the minimum lot size for public, for, for, if you have a good lot, what's the minimum lot size to have?
In what zoning classification?
Pardon?
Of, with well and septic at all.
Well and septic, yeah, is it a half acre?
We, it depends on also the size of your house. So your well has a fifty foot radius around it, however, two well radiuses can cross each other. Um, but your drain fields, they cannot cross the drain field and you cannot build anything within that fifty foot radius unless you choose not to termite treat it and health department has some regulations on that. But, uh, Oakwood Estates, for example, that is a cluster, A two subdivision with forty thousand square foot lot size and they have private wells and private drain fields and very nice sized houses and they are accommodated. Now, the well radiuses also cross over into, um, that fifty foot radius does cross into some of the open space or maybe some of the roadway and that's perfectly acceptable. You do have some local room with that forty thousand square feet.
Hundred percent reserve what size area for that?
A hundred percent reserve.
But what size area is that?
Depends on the house, bedrooms in the house.
Yes.
And the perkability of the soil. Assuming most of those are four, four bedrooms.
Most of them on average are four bedrooms, yes. So you have to have a hundred percent reserve for the Chesapeake Bay Act and that is something that is looked at during subdivision plan review by the health department, not me.
Would it be reasonable to say that your average drain field would be, say, six lines, a hundred feet long, three feet apart or six feet apart?
I, I really think it's dependent upon the soils, um, some are shallow and long, some are short and deep. It, it just depends and that's a conventional drain field, you also have alternative systems that you can't discriminate against either.
So my thinking would be to take the R one and R two. It, it has with public water and sewer, with public water or sewer, and you make a third line, no public water and sewer. But you gotta figure out your lot size, if you're looking at a normal R one and R two with no water and sewer, you're at thirty thousand square feet. Can you put it on a half acre at twenty thousand square feet and just put it, so in other words, you have three different levels. When you go through, you're either no water and sewer and you're still getting a break because you're going to twenty thousand, twenty thousand's a half acre, right roughly?
Little on here.
So if you did twenty or twenty five thousand, whatever, you're still making it a lower standard. But then on that, you would just have to draw a line across because your open space would have to be different on that particular and we have to figure out the percentage there, whatever that is.
So also keep in mind that if you don't just build a house with an attached garage, they build pools and secondary garages and a whole nice cabana backyard. So you have to leave room for that as well. Playgrounds, I mean, all of those things you do not wanna put on top of your drain field.
Right. So just for clarification though, in A two, the forty thousand square foot lot for clustering is a buy right size, correct?
Yes, currently under our ordinance.
Forty thousand.
The minimum, the minimum buy rights are?
I don't know that I would go lower than forty thousand square foot with well and septic.
Alright. Yeah. Shoot.
So currently in A two, the minimum lot size is two acres and this is under, just under an acre. But it's a, it's a balance, whatever your lot size is, your open space requirement has to balance.
You guys did a comparative, Stafford and somebody else. How big is the house?
It's a attachment E, F, sorry, FF.
Eighteen hundred.
It's not super wide lots then.
Right.
So it's very deep, so you have.
It's true. Stafford minimum is one point five acres.
When you guys looked at the other localities, uh, Stafford and Spotsylvania, did they not have an A two, two acre lot size comparison? The C's, we have A one from Stafford and then we have R two from Spotsy. Do you remember?
You could choose that.
I, I think they did have some others, but we didn't wanna make this fifty pages long, you know, they had
Yeah.
other districts and so we were just sort of pulling some examples here, um.
Trying to quickly pull one up, also Stafford is the one who has the.
Showcases it on the map, shows mapped areas for where it can be.
Okay. I can send it to you. So it looks like they have, they, they, I haven't looked that much, they, they may, they should, but on their map and in their ordinance, they say that, you know, they're allowed on the mapped areas. They have portions inside the urban services area and portions outside the urban services area. This is just what it looks like so everyone can see.
I think orange is probably up that side.
And then white clearly is not allowed.
It's not allowed.
Not allowed. And again, I didn't look at the comp plan to see what it is they said in there, maybe their reasons why or, or regardless of the comp plan. It's on their website, yeah, they have a, this is Stafford County, they have a list of their maps, I can send it to Heather, um.
And I can send it to this mission.
But Mr. DeBries, I just Googled Stafford County cluster subdivision map and it came right up. But yeah, I don't know the rhyme or reason to how they picked these areas, but it is something that we could consider if staff wants to look at a map and chisel out some areas. And, and I'm feeling like we're not gonna.
Help them, I mean, it's, it's not gonna help us with heat and dry. No, that. That's, that's a primary settlement district. It is, it is, but I mean, for some of the other, it's gonna, it's gonna spread, right?
I, I definitely have concerns meeting that forty percent rule with a map being that we're very close to that threshold without opening up to A one districts and, and things of that nature, so just take that under consideration.
So I don't know that we have a solution tonight, I would say, um, maybe let's revisit this, maybe at your next work session, um, you could continue to, or your next meeting, you could continue to, to think about what you would like as the solution, um, in terms of your sewer and the lot size and.
I think we should talk a little bit about other things we can do, just real quick, um. The, the, the hardest one I think is orange. Uh, a minimum of one hundred and twelve acre parcel or parent parcel can be a cluster, that's, that's the smallest cluster you can do is a hundred and twelve acres. One hundred of those acres has to be reserved for agricultural use, that's the toughest one. The others are, uh, Prince William, you've got fifty percent minimum three acre lot size. With the frontage buffer, that's another control we can put on it, is frontage buffers and side buffers between, e- even between, uh, cluster subdivision.
They did propose that in that last section all the way to the right, yeah, so all the way to the right. Which we can adjust those numbers to be more, but we did add that just for the setback as a, I mean, the development as a whole.
But it can be cluster to cluster too, it doesn't have to be a difference.
Right, right, assuming, yeah, if you had two clusters on top of each other.
Mm-hmm.
So that setback that we've added for the whole development, that would be regardless of what it's next to, if it's next to just the road, some other lots, another minor subdivision, Walmart, um, whatever it might be.
And so what we've said there is, um, boundary spacing the public road would be three hundred feet setback and then other.
Setback to the nearest lot?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, um, other development boundaries would be a hundred feet. And that's for the A two, A three, if you're the R one, R two, R three, um, that doesn't apply unless you're abutting an A two or A three.
Do you believe that we can limit clusters to a certain parcel size?
Um, I guess if you can still meet that forty percent, um, of unimproved land contained in residential or, um, agricultural zoning district.
Well, I'm saying like all of, all of A two.
I don't know if we can.
All of A two cluster is gonna be permitted, but you have to have a minimum of, on hundred acres to do it.
But there's not a lot of hundred acre, A two, un, um, undeveloped lots, certainly not forty percent of the unimproved.
And it would be more.
And that would also be more.
You would have to purchase two lots. So you'd have to purchase two fifty acre lots to do it, you'd have to piece together lots to do it.
And that would be stringent as well from our buy right, you would have to make that a major subdivision clause period. Not just cluster.
So I would suggest that we continue to, to look at what state code says.
You read it?
Continue to think about those lot area minimums and how that might relate to if it's private versus public water and sewer. Um, and we can come back on this item, just so that we can move through the rest of things tonight. Does everyone agree, is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cluster's the only reason I'm here, isn't it?
Okay, is there any other loose end before we move on to article five? This one should be much quicker. Okay, alright, article five, so this is going to have your Chesapeake Bay overlay, floodplain, your highway corridor overlay and then when we get to it and get it crafted, your military overlay. Even if that goes by a different name by the time we're done, um, until then, that's what we have been calling it. That will be reviewed at, we'll begin discussion really, I should say, at the next work session. Okay, so for this one, this one is more state, state code heavy than article four. Um, with Chesbay, you have some certain things you have to follow, with floodplain, you have some things you have to follow and should follow. Um, so that leaded the drafting here and then also again, with most of the update, we've just reorganized some things for some clarity just to cut down on repetition, that sort of thing. Alright, so first thing that we wanna call out is section five two three and that is a provision that will allow the zoning administrator to determine boundaries for single family dwellings if requested by the applicant. Um, this is an optional part of state code, it certainly does not have to remain in here if it's not enjoyed. Um, but it is, it is something we have introduced. Any thoughts on it?
Can you just throw that out there one more time, sorry?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's okay, so five two three, um, this is just adding an optional provision from state code that permits the zoning administrator to determine RPA boundaries essentially. that permits the zoning administrator to determine RPA boundaries essentially, if they're requested by the applicant. And this is just for single family dwellings.
And to add, this is pretty much a service my department's already providing.
Oh, great.
We will send someone from staff when we are reviewing their application to field check. If they're remotely close to that hundred foot RPA, if there's a discrepancy, the applicant then has the option to hire a professional to do a full determination.
Okay.
But essentially if it's in the back left corner of their lot, they're a thousand feet away, I'm not requiring them to delineate it. I'm just verifying they're not disturbing it. They're not close, that it's not bigger than what it's showing on the, the
So you're doing it now?
Yes, sir.
It's basically just to streamline it so that they don't have to go get if it, if they're nowhere near.
If there's no reason to have a delineation, then why have them?
Right.
We usually err on the side of caution. We put an RPA to, uh, a hundred foot buffer on it. Um, if they're outside of it, no harm, no foul. If they want to go inside of it, we would require a delineation for them to prove that is indeed not of an RPA protected, uh, wetlands.
I think it's good.
Yeah.
So you're using your own GIS map of where the weapons are and where their
It's more of an indicator that someone needs to go out. Um, I do have an environmental inspector, although he put in his notice. So if you know anybody, we've got our job open. Uh, but it is a, a service we provide. We go out there and we, we take a look of what, cause sometimes they're on the map and it's nothing more than a drainage ditch. Stafford
Confirming what? Do you determine where
The RPA.
Think that hundred foot buffer might be in relation to what appears to be
Correct. If, if, if there's a, a red flag of concern, we'll invoke a, a professional delineation. Yes.
I think it's good, especially with bigger, I mean, if you have ten acre lots and things like that, you're streamlining the process.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Y'all agree?
I'm good.
Okay. The next one will probably not be so cut and dry, but we'll get through it. All right. So Paige, I'm gonna direct you to the page, page thirteen of your draft. And this is in section five, two, seven, and it's item nine. So in the existing ordinance, this paragraph that begins land upon which agricultural activities are being conducted. It's basically saying that soil and water quality, um, assessments are to be conducted. And that then some additional practices that are needed could be required. So this was, this paragraph number nine, item number nine, was already in the existing ordinance. We have expanded this a little bit through the following Roman numerals, one, two, and three to give a little bit more detail. And these, a lot of these, once you get down through them, are probably assessments or tasks that they're already following if they're an agricultural land that's doing a legitimate production. Crops, a hundred head of cattle, forestry, crop production, um, that sort of thing. So these items are more or less just some extra room for King George to say, if you're not doing these things, that the state is probably already requiring you to do, you all can enforce it as it's in the zoning ordinance.
Yes. So this was also feedback that we received from Tri County, um, that they have run into issues in the field, but don't have a regulation to enforce. Um, so this gives us teeth to that enforcement.
And I will call out, and this is probably out of any portion of this, what we would want to discuss amongst ourselves here now is what this applies to. So in the existing ordinance, it just says land upon which agricultural activities are being conducted. We have expanded that to the fullest extent possible to get your feel for it. So what we've included to say is this is not limited to crop production, pasture, dairy and feedlot operations, or lands otherwise defined agricultural by King George County. So essentially that can be interpreted as any agricultural land, which may be a bit too much. Are, what do we think? Again, just as a reminder, the existing ordinance leaves it as agricultural activities, doesn't provide an example or definition.
I'd ask Heather, does that, does that help y'all? I mean, I would think the increased specificity may remove any ambiguity if landowners like, you can't come on my land, you know, or something.
Yeah. It, having that definitive answer is certainly a, a tool for our department.
Okay.
And that, that is again, some of the feedback that Tri County has, has, has given us. Um, most farmers do these things anyways because they have all these incentive programs that Tri County puts out there, but there are some that don't always want to, to follow those rules.
Cause I'm thinking that it might be for like, for instances we've had in the past where we're dealing with bio solids or something, right?
Right. So right now bio solids can be spread up to fifty feet away from an RPA or river. Whereas you cannot build a house within a hundred feet of it. Um, so there is that unbalance there that is difficult for our staff to explain to a neighboring property. Well, you know, Farmer Joe is, is next door spreading bio solids right up to that fifty foot. Why can't I build my house? You know, my, my house appears to be less invasive.
I mean, does anybody have any passionate thoughts about that one way or another?
I'm just a little concerned about the, the language, the specificity of the language. It says land upon which agricultural, agricultural activities are being conducted. And I, I don't want this to, I don't want this to, uh, just for example, a little absurd sounding, but our beekeepers, I don't want it to impact our beekeepers who have A two rights or chicken people that we just passed that. Chicken keeper people, chicken keeper people. Um, so should I guess it's land upon which agricultural is the primary or, or the sole activity? I mean, I don't wanna, I
I think it also helps in situations where people clear with the agricultural exemption and put a cow or two out there and call it agricultural activities to circumvent the ordinance.
Yeah.
And I think that is again, a tool in our toolbox.
Is that, if I'm, so I'm thinking of the conversation we've had before about agritourism, right? I mean, so that would kinda help stifle those. If there's not really agri in the tourism element, you, this would give you a little bit more of a, of a definitive means of going there just by the statutes wording to say, we're gonna go look at this because I don't think you're doing anything agri related, right?
Correct.
So I mean, I'm just thinking it from that perspective.
I mean, I, I can see Mr. DeBree's point, you know, we certainly don't want to overreach to, you know, beekeeping and things that we should be encouraging, especially beekeeping. So we could, you know,
Also, we could define agricultural land and/or agricultural activities. And in that definition, they could say does not include beekeeping and chicken keeping, um, which we will likely have as a use and defined otherwise to be determined, but
Beekeeping, beekeeping, those were
Those were on primary residences. Those were actually residential uses. So I just wanna split that out.
Well, that's the other thing about this.
Focus on agriculture.
Right. Well, this too, it's, the way that it's written is so that it's not saying just agricultural districts because you could have a bunch of the A three that has no farming or ag. It's really just subdivisions and homes wouldn't apply to this. So that's why it doesn't say agricultural districts. It just says agricultural lands with legitimate operations on them. Um, and I think it would just come down to, to stop this worry is just to define it and just make sure that it's very clear that bees and chickens are not included.
Okay. Yeah. I was just worried about the specificity of that language. I mean, it could be, it could be, it could go either way. It could be underinterpreted or overinterpreted. Could be over
I think you're pulling in a bunch of land. I mean, anything in land use then would qualify for this. Technically, right?
Correct.
Even if you're forest use, it doesn't
Correct. So right now in King George County, a farm or any agricultural exemption is ten acres of agriculturally land used land. And then like for a farm exam exemption permit for a barn or some, it, it goes down your permitted uses. Are you storing your tractor? Are you housing your cows, et cetera? Your, your hay, your, your product of that farm? Um, I do think that there probably needs to be some more clear defined uh, definitions of fact checking some of that because I think that that is, is something that has been abused and, and having that land use taxation is certainly an avenue that a lot of other counties do utilize. But I think that's a rabbit hole that we're going down at this time.
Any other thoughts on this? Most, mostly agree? Wanna, wanna keep? Okay.
I think it was left vague originally on purpose, but I don't I don't know.
What are you growing?
Trees. Then you're getting a lot more oversight. I don't know whether that's good or bad at this point.
Well, we still go through a public comment here on this when we're done with the draft. So you'll get feedback from anybody in the county who's got heartache with that. Assuming they read it.
Is, does that sound like the best choice is leave it as is and, and see how we get see how the public reacts?
I don't have it. Everybody will catch it. All right. And that was section, what section is that? That's
Five, two, seven, and then it item C nine? C nine?
Good.
Good? Okay. The next thing that we changed here in the Chesapeake Bay overlay is in section five, two, nine. And what we did is we added a new provision that requires a pre-application meeting for any development that requires a plan of development, um, which is just a, a best practice to have a sit down and, and get a feel for the project beforehand. Any immediate?
Can we go back to buffer area requirement?
Yep.
Can we expand that to require native plants, uh, for use in King George County? As well as those plantings must be evenly dispersed throughout the disturbed area and the buffer mitigation?
Will you tell me what number it is?
Um.
Or Paige, and then I could probably find it from there.
Fourteen. Letter D, buffer area requirement. We have a hard time with, uh, buffer mitigation. They wanna call of their replanting to one median oil side instead of making actual buffer. And I think having that, that clear guidance, um, as well as encouraging native plants to King George County
Okay.
is certainly something we would like to see.
Okay. So.
Yeah.
So you want to encourage them to, to spread that out, not do one cluster of
Yeah.
trees and you want to encourage native plants. Did I get that right?
Yeah. And, you know, something along the lines of creating an effective buffer, you know, not putting all your shrubs at your house and I mean, we certainly work with people with steep slopes and, and things that just don't make good common sense, but clustering them all into one corner after you removed your entire buffer is not a buffer reestablishment.
Are you finding this is all the time or mostly just when they have to be replanted?
Replanting.
Okay.
Well, or, or establishment. Um, I mean, there's certain cases.
Both. Okay.
If you have to plant
Okay.
I want it nice and even. I want a true buffer.
Okay. Uh, okay. Back to five, two, nine. So again, item B two, we just added in that you have to have a pre-application conference, um, meeting. And again, this is just a best practice. It's similar to having one if you have a large rezoning or you have a big site plan. It's pretty common practice when you have a lot going on to have a pre-conference meeting and that's just, so every party is on the same page. Any pushback on that? Any questions?
So that's a best practice that's employed?
It is. And I can't remember, we looked at Westmoreland staff, I guess it was, who else is nearby? We looked at your neighbors. And, and again, even outside of Chesbay, anytime you have something that's either large in size or has a large impact, it's best to have a, an informal sit down before the official submissions, just so that the applicant knows what's expected and you all know, well, staff would know what's coming before it's coming.
Makes sense. Keep them inside the lines before they
Yes. Yeah. And then there's no, I didn't know that, or what do you mean? Um, and then also, um, item E of the same section. So if you scroll down to page twenty-three, I believe, um, this is just a new provision that allows a zoning administrator to waive environmental site assessment. Um, if needed, this isn't something that's required to be in here. It's, it's optional. It, 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 this was added as another measure of just some flexibility. And this is something that would already be submitted at a site plan point. Um, or the beginning stages of a subdivision approval. So in some cases, you simply but maybe don't need all of the things, which is what this is in response to. But again, it is not something that you have to include. You don't have to include a waiver for this.
I, I think the waiver for a single family dwelling is reasonable. I'm not sure about a major develop of when I would consider a waiver. Do, is there any examples of, of why we might consider? Cause none come to my mind immediately.
No. Do you have any Rebecca? Other than single family homes would be the biggest.
Because your, your resource protection areas, your wetlands, that kinda guides where you can develop. So it's a pretty important preliminary tool.
Yeah, we can certainly keep it, especially with King George being, you know, having so many sensitive areas. And another thing that maybe it would be used for, which is just more single family, but family subdivisions or where you're just doing two lots or three lots, something like that. Um, but again, it doesn't certainly doesn't make sense for everybody. So if it's sometimes you wanna have flexibility and sometimes you wanna have more control. So
I think if it's cut and dry, it's not saying you have to waive. If it's cut and dry, I mean, if you have a cluster subdivision going on and it's on a hundred acres and the wetlands all the way at the back and they're saying they're not using the back half. Why?
But I, I don't know. If, if they have a hundred acres, I would have to walk all of that hundred acre in order to definitively confirm that they're not touching anything in the front side. Whereas if I go to a single family lot that's an acre, I can find that wetland pretty easily. Um, I could, I could see the consideration for things of, you know, a minor subdivision, of a family subdivision where those are pretty small lots of, you know, one to five at most that we could waive possibly, but of a major site plan, a major subdivision, a rezoning, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that those would come into play. Could we add some more conditions of what would qualify for a waiver?
We could.
It's pretty broad at the, the moment.
It just puts me in a bad position of, well, we don't need a RPA. We're good. Trust me. And we can look, we can look at other localities and see what, what sort of conditions they're looking at. Do you have anything in mind? Like, oh yeah, I would immediately do it if it was less than, you know, X amount of land disturbance or for a single family dwelling.
Yeah, maybe if the threshold was the area of disturbance or, um, a total acreage Yeah, maybe if the threshold was the area of disturbance or, um, a total acreage. Something that was a small quantifiable, easily assessed by my staff.
Okay. Yep, that's fair.
And then, if we could also talk about the environmental site assessment of who could do that, um. Then next section one, uh, number seven.
Mm-hmm, this is page twenty four, everybody?
Yes, uh, so halfway through that, it says. Shall be certified as complete and accurate by a professional engineer, certified land surveyor, soil scientist, wetland scientist. Certified landscape architect or a person or firm competent to make the assessment. That person or firm competent to make that assessment is very broad and concerning.
Would, would you feel better if it, if we just left it after landscape architect?
Yes.
Okay.
Easy enough. Yeah. Start or shall be certified as. These people should be certified, a, a certified soil scientist, a certified wetland scientist, they, they should have.
So instead of the word competent to make the assessment, could it be certified to make the assessment?
Yes, I, I would agree to that.
Is a landscape architect competent to do that, make that assessment?
I'd have to check the code.
Wasn't being as smart as I was.
Honestly, we don't run across, I think in my career, I've met one landscape architect.
Yeah.
And it was just a really nice house that had a whole lot of land.
Maybe we could look at DEPOR and see if landscape architects are competent in that arena.
What was, what was your question?
I said, well, I wonder if we could look at DEPOR, Department of Professional Occupational Regulation. To determine if a landscape architect is competent to determine wetlands.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure what their. I wish I knew one, and then I can, you know, easily discern it, but we can look and see what the, um. What Virginia, the state of Virginia requires them to know or not know to be.
I mean, uh, the, the other alternative is just to be very vague and just say. Anyone certified to make such a determination, I mean, those.
Could, I, I think as long as we have that key factor of certified and not competent. Because a property owner could say, well, I'm, I'm competent to identify wetlands on my own property. And some may be and some may not be.
Okay, anything else on that? And that is the last thing that I wanted to call out for the Chesapeake overlay, unless you all caught anything you wanna call out. No. Okay, next up is floodplain, this one really just in nine o'clock terminology is what it is. We, we had it match the state, uh, model ordinance. I think the latest one they put out was twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. So, a lot of what you have or what we've proposed, the content itself is not much different. It's laid out incredibly different, so if you were to make a side, side, side by side comparison, you're going to say, no, this is so different. The content is not different, it's just the way that we have organized it. Um, we have made one change and that is just adding a, a free board of twelve inches. To the lowest floor, which is essentially just making the base of your building in these zones. A, V, B, E, A, E and A, H, which, I don't think you have any A, H, maybe you know A, E either. Most of it's A and, and B, either way, it just takes the minimum a little higher. The state model ordinance suggests eighteen inches, which many localities. Um, get wide eyed at, so we have suggested twelve inches just as a happy medium. Especially in light of this fire truck situation, um. And, and how far you're gonna start your measurement for those houses that are on stilts or that are raised.
And, and a couple of things to add there, the, the reason to add any additional inches. So you've got your base flood, you know, FEMA says this is how high it's likely to flood. Um, and so typically you say, okay, you can start building from that point. What has been suggested now by FEMA is, well, these, you know, sure, we can say it's at this level. But that's not always true and inaccurate, somebody might do something upstream that they haven't reported. And it's gonna increase, you know, your, your flood level, so to kind of further protect. They recommend, here's your flood level, actually build eighteen inches above that. We're saying twelve, I mean, it's an additional foot above what they're thinking is gonna flood. So hopefully that's enough protection and it does help someone who's built there to have a little lower flood insurance. Because, hey, here's base flood, but I'm not gonna flood cause I'm a foot above that. Um, so that's the, the thinking there, um. Thoughts, are you happy with the twelve inches? I see head nods. It, it's the floor, so your, your. Base flood, twelve inches, then you start. Your floor.
Bottom of the joist or the, okay. It's actually bottom of the joist or twelve inches.
Say that again?
Bottom of the joist or twelve inches?
Yes. And, and to tie back to the height, we have said that that is where you start measuring from for your height. So in these particular cases. Your. Kind of wanna say this. Um. Ah, nine o'clock brain.
Taller, it will look taller than it's allowed to be, but it's because it's measuring from.
Right.
This point, so instead of measuring from the ground thirty-five feet up, you're measuring from the bottom of the floor, which is. Where it's raised. It's very late and I'm not saying. The, the most logically.
Would it be helpful to have a diagram?
Yes, perhaps, I did question this, yeah. Okay, anything, I think that's all I wanted to call attention to.
I, I have a question.
Okay.
So I'm a little confused about the next couple notes that talk about five lots instead of fifty.
Okay.
Can we, can you explain that?
Rebecca can. Hopefully.
Where are we? Cause I see that it notes, the ordinance recommends requiring five lots instead of fifty.
What page are you on now Heather, forty four?
Two, uh, it also references it on forty-four as well.
Yeah, try five three seventeen. Thanks for hanging in there, everybody, we're almost to the end.
So on page four, where on page forty-four?
So in the editor's note, at the bottom, it says the recommended standard here is five lots instead of fifty. Um. But in the ordinance, it still says fifty for five acres. It's just a big jump between five lots or fifty lots and. Or maybe it's typo, I'm not sure.
No, that actually, I'm going from memory here. And this is a change that I see in a lot of ordinances. I think there was an old rule that was this fifty lots or five acres. And now the model ordinance is saying, do away with that. And do five lots.
We're still proposing fifty?
Yeah.
We are, because it is such a big jump.
Yep.
Um.
Can you put it in the context, I guess? Just come in and nine o'clock brain, I'm, uh, when would I implement this, when?
I'm reading.
So this is those, and I think that's probably where the fifty's coming from, that major subdivision when you've got. Three or more and you can do, right, preliminary plan. Um, so I think that's the connection there, why, why there's this fifty, um. So they have to do a preliminary plan, in that preliminary plan, they would give you this detailed hydraulic. Analysis.
But if I have five, but it also says five acres, so let's say I just have a twenty acre, a one lot that I'm splitting in half. Do I have to, I can't use the firm panel, I gotta do a whole study?
Looks like you have to do a study if there's a five acre lot, right?
Or I thought, I read it as if the subdivision involves more than five acres, so.
You know, if he wants all the five acres.
Something just feels off there.
But I don't know, like in your example of, you know, splitting a lot, that typically isn't considered a subdivision. I mean, you're subdividing a lot, but it's not a subdivision.
Maybe a little context or clarity might be needed, yeah, how is it defined?
Subdivision will be defined when we get to the subdivision ordinance section, but and I can make a note just to. Look at this a little bit further and, and see.
With a better brain capacity than we currently have.
Right, starting to run on E.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, with that, anybody have anything else from floodplain? We are in the home stretch here. The next one is the highway corridor overlay district, so I'll start with the easy stuff and then save the longest for last. So what we heard from staff here for changes is some more robust landscaping, um. So, and buffer and, and some aesthetic control there. So that, what we've done is we've removed any of the community design standards. And we're going to be putting those in article eight, which I know we've talked about a bunch. So what we have now in the HCOD in article five is just a reference to article eight. And then so when we get to article eight, which is the sixth work session, we will dive in to landscaping standards. And essentially the way it will work is we will have the landscaping standards generally. And then when there are extra landscaping standards, such as this, there will be another section that builds on that. Um, so it will be very clear, I just wanted to call out that we're not taking them away, we're just streamlining the ordinance as a whole. And so any references, um, were added to, to other parts of the ordinance. Um, is that, does that make sense? The same would be for lighting or setbacks or, um, or it's not a good example, fencing, this, sort of the same thing. Uh, but we will beef up the landscaping for this district when we get there. The other big change that we did here, um, and we talked about this with staff and hopefully you all agree. Is we have changed exceptions to the highway corridor overlay to come to you, the planning commission. Instead of the BZA, for much the same reason that you see other things that the BZA typically does. Um, partially because you have more familiarity, but also because many of the reasons you would want to give an exception. To the highway corridor overlay wouldn't necessarily fall within the parameters that the BZA has to offer a variance. Any thought? Or concerns about having that power?
No.
Good? Okay. Um, I think that's it guys, that is it, next up, we, this is. Had a little, um, malfunction here, but next work session will be use matrix. And the beginnings of the military overlay. And that will be May thirty first.
Alright.
So during that, we will invite our planning liaison, Mr. Hastings and his crew to come and sit down with us. And start the conversation again, but we're gonna make headway this time of our military overlay, so.
I remember the last time, it was fun, alright.
Any questions about tonight, any last thoughts? Thank you for, for sticking it out, it's a long one.
Do any feedback from our last work session?
I think, I think we're good, I think we have all of the edits, we, yeah, no, I think we're good, you will see that. The next time you see those articles will be all together.
Okay, so.
So the same process.
There won't, there won't be any back and forth from our comments from the last work.
No, but we will do that same process for these articles, so you all will give any feedback and edits and changes. To Heather, if you have any that we haven't talked about, staff will get their own thoughts together, send them to us, we'll incorporate those changes. Get them back to Heather and Louis and Richard, and then so that you're at your next meeting, you all can go over them, just like we, just like you all did last time. So make sure you get those, uh, to staff within ten days.
Are you distributing them to everyone?
Yes, sir. We are.
Cause I didn't get any.
You were the only one to give. Gold star for you, Mr. DeRee.
And I would just remind too that in your next meeting, you probably wanna talk about the cluster items. And get us your thoughts there so we can incorporate that.
Well, thank you all for, uh, spending your evening with us. I'm sure there's no place you'd rather be, and, uh. I believe we are, we don't have any other questions for the Berkeley group representative, we can move through the rest of our agenda. Which is probably no more than three, four more hours. Next item on is new business, do we have any new business? Next item is director's report.
Uh, no director's report, but at this time, we don't have anything on the agenda for your next meeting. Except for now the discussion of cluster subdivision, so homework of what we wanna see. So that we can give these fine ladies better direction.
Well, we can throw this set out.
Yeah, I think it's a good opportunity, a free meeting, we'll, we'll put that on the agenda.
Anything else, Miss Ho?
That's all I have.
Alright, next item is other business. There is no other business. I'm gonna make a motion for the most exciting portion of the evening, I think we have a motion?
Our motion.
Motion been made, seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, have a good evening. I know, I need.